But no, nothing's gonna hold you back now.
This is good. A lot, but good.
You've also got more than enough reason to switch to GEICO. Because with GEICO, you've got the ability to reach an agent for help 24/7, unlike your ability to get more water at this restaurant.
Yeah, you can just leave the pitcher this time.
And even though you regret overlooking the four little peppers next to your dish on the menu, you'll never feel overlooked with GEICO. Because they're available 24/7. Maybe that's why they've got a 97% customer satisfaction rating.
Oh, wow.
So Philadelphia, while you're trying to look composed with a mouthful of ice cubes as you fan yourself with the drink menu, you can feel relieved knowing GEICO helps with homeowners and renters insurance through the GEICO Insurance Agency, too. GEICO, more reasons than ever to switch today over the phone, at your local office, or at geico.com.
Have you ever gone too far? Taking that one little thing you have to do and turning it into something much, much bigger? Of course you have. You're a truck person. That's how fire pits turn into brick pizza ovens and koi ponds turn into pools. Ford makes trucks for truck people. Not dilettantes and not dabblers. People who love a project as much as we love making these trucks. Which is why Ford F-Series has been America's best-selling line of trucks for 43 years straight. It's official, the truck people have spoken. Ford F-150, built Ford tough. Now you can get an F-150 with 0% financing for 48 months plus $3,250 cash back. Not only buyers will qualify for Ford credit financing, $3,250 cash back instead of $2,500 bonus cash plus $7,500 Ford Credit Retail bonus cash. Discounts and payments may vary. Dealer determines price of vehicle. 48 months at $2,084 per month per thousand finance regardless of down payment. For all offers, take new retail delivery from authorized Ford dealers stock by 3/20/20. See dealer for qualifications and complete details.
Do you find yourself drinking coconut water out of a wine glass? Have you had the urge to snorkel in your bathtub? If this sounds like you, it's time to check out Funjet Vacations. You can save up to 45% and get unlimited luxury at dreams, resorts, and spas when you book with Funjet. Finally, your whole family can surf more than just the cable channels. Call your local Funjet agent or visit funjet.com today. Restrictions and exclusions apply. View full terms and conditions at funjet.com.
Norwegian Cruise Line's free-for-all sale is on. Book now and get up to $4,100 in value, including all five free offers like free open bar and free excursions, plus $200 to spend onboard, and with free air to destinations like Europe, Alaska, and Hawaii.
Welcome everyone to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for March 11, 2020. As usual, we start with a moment of silence, then followed by the Pledge Allegiance. You stand with the board for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, a one nation, a one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Special actions, police accommodation Sergeant Myers, and then a police officer swearing in Nicholas Moffett, chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. As your police chief, I report to you tonight is both a sad night for Newtown Township and also a promising night for Newtown Township Police Department. Tonight, we get to say goodbye and offer happy and healthy retirement to a 40-plus-year member of the Newtown Township Police Department. Sergeant Steven Myers has faithfully served the community of Newtown Township since 1979. When Steve joined the police department, there were only 10 police officers in the agency. The population of Newtown was just over 4,500 people, and many of the housing and business developments weren't even thought of back in the day. Cops had a six-shot revolver. There weren't any computers, no computers in the cars. This was all pre-internet, pre-computer, pre-computer technology. The only things officers had were the typewriter, a pen, and some carbon paper, and probably some whiteout back in the day. I've had the awesome privilege of getting to know Steve over this past year, and he was a valuable asset to me personally and to the department as a whole. He has a strong work ethic. He was dedicated to the safety of the community. Throughout his career, he was a strong proponent of community policing, receiving many letters and thanks and praise from residents and business owners alike. Steve served both as a dare and team instructor, benefiting many of the children in our community as well. He would be truly missed by our agency, and I would like to present Sergeant Myers with his official retirement badge from the Newtown Township Police Department and present him a plaque upon his retirement. Forty-plus years. Long time. So presented to Sergeant Steven Myers, badge number 5215, congratulations on your retirement with 40 years of dedicated service to the Newtown Township Police Department, from the commanders, officers, and administrative staff at Newtown Township Police Department, September 10, 1979, to March 1, 2020. Congratulations, Steve. Outstanding work. Like I said, that was the sad part for me. However, the promising part also starts today, as we officially square in Steve's replacement, Officer Nick Willis-Moffett. Nick, where you at? Come on up here, buddy. Nick, like many of our new officers, wasn't even born when Steve joined the police department. Nick's got a bachelor's degree in criminology from Penn State University. He graduated from the Penn State Temple Police Academy in March 2019. He was recently serving Doylestown Township as a police officer and has opted to bring his training and work ethic to Newtown Township. Nick will have the benefit of many of his state-of-the-art police equipment such as long guns, critical incident response, and car computers, and the internet with no whiteout. Nick has indicated a strong desire to continue the proud traditions of community policing in Newtown, but also to keep with the family tradition of protecting and serving in law enforcement, like his father Will, who was an active police sergeant in the neighboring Buckingham Township. We couldn't ask for a better candidate to fill the role and fill the shoes of Sergeant Myers and to continue his father's legacy in law enforcement. So with that, I would ask Nick Moffett, Judge Mick Petrusi, and his parents, Nick's parents, to step up for his official swearing-in, please.
Are you folks ready? Okay. You'll repeat after me. I, Nicholas Moffett.
I, Nicholas Moffett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Pennsylvania Constitution.
The Pennsylvania Constitution.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the governmental subdivision.
And the governmental subdivision.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
As a Newtown Township police officer with fidelity.
As a Newtown Township police officer with fidelity.
Congratulations, officer. It's official.
Thank you very much, sir. Be safe, be safe. All right.
Chief?
Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break for some pictures and handshake? Well, watch the handshaking, but everything else.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Chief?
Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break for some pictures and handshake? Well, watch the handshaking, but everything else.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Chief?
Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break for some pictures and handshake? Well, watch the handshaking, but everything else.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[772.75]
I'm sorry. My son is 13 years old and is transgender. We are amazed by his courage and his strength to live his truth at such a young age. I had a lot of fears and concerns about how people would accept him, respect him, and not just tolerate him. My fears and concerns have slowly disappeared because of the love and the support we received from family, friends, teachers, and administrators at Centennial School District. Dr. David Ball personally reached out to me and asked me to come in and sit with him face to face because he wanted to know if Centennial School District was doing enough for LGBT plus students and all of their families. And we sat down and we talked. He wrote so many things down, and I know I'm going to see change. What a beautiful thing. To stand here knowing that I am asking you to consider something so simple and something that means so much to the LGBT plus youth confuses me to why there is so much pushback. It truly saddens my heart. There are a lot of days designated to different things. My youngest daughter is left-handed. August 13th is acknowledged as Left-handed Day. My other children aren't complaining about why lefties have their own day, or what about us righties, Mom? Instead, we enjoy the day and we let her know that her uniqueness is recognized. It's recognized, and recognizing Love is Love Day on February 15th is just that. It's a celebration to all LGBTQ plus youth, and I hope that you can accept, support, and put this resolution into action. And I thank you for your time.
Steve Santisaro, Lower Magfield Township. It's a lot of things I'd rather be doing tonight. And I want to start by acknowledging, and I hope you received the letter that I sent to each of you on the board. You should have received that yesterday. But I want to start by acknowledging the principle of this board and what it did. Linda, when you were on it just a couple of years ago, and John, your leadership, and Phil, and Dennis, when you write it a wrong here in Newtown, that we've been unable to write throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we've been unable to write throughout the United States. And that is, you passed the ordinance, the Civil Rights Ordinance, which guarantees civil rights to our LGBTQ plus community. Because right now, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and many parts of the United States, it is perfectly legal to discriminate against members of that community in a variety of contexts, ranging from employment to housing. But you stood up with a clear voice and said, "Not in Newtown Township." And I applaud you for that. Because not every town in Bucks County, not every town in the 10th State Senate District that I represent, has done that. So I'm deeply grateful for the fact that you took that step. Now, I'm not going to go through all the facts of what happened and how we got to this point with this resolution. I stated that in the letter. The purpose of the resolution, at the end of the day, was to recognize what a lot of the youth who are here tonight were doing, which was to have their first queer prom, the first one of its kind, and how much that meant for those kids. And believe me, when my colleagues in the State Senate refused to bring that resolution, essentially the same resolution, up for a vote on the floor of the State Senate, it was personally upsetting to me. And I was very grateful when every member of the Democratic Caucus stood with me when I spoke on the floor of the Senate that day about how important that statement for the support of these kids really was. Now, I wasn't at this last meeting, but I understand that some of the concerns that were raised boiled down to this idea that somehow by passing the resolution, it would be exclusionary. We would not be including all the other groups and people who have various issues and feel marginalized in our society. And as I said in the letter to you, the flaw in that argument is implicit in that argument is this notion that by singling out one specific group, in this case LGBTQ plus youth, we are somehow denigrating other groups. And nothing could be further from the truth. As was just so eloquently said, we have days, we have months, we have weeks that we acknowledge certain issues and certain groups in our society, and it's right to do so. Because at those times, we want to focus on whatever issue is at hand. And in this case, that's all we're asking. We're asking that this board, as your colleagues in Newtown Borough did, acknowledge that that one day, that one special day for these kids was Love is Love Day. Governor Wolf stood up and acknowledged that. Lieutenant Governor Fetterman did. And so many of us in the Senate and in the State House as well did the same thing. It's a statement that you stand with these young people, these courageous young people who are here tonight. And indeed, you need to hear their voices more than you need to hear mine, so I'm going to yield the floor in just a moment. But courageous, not just that they're here to talk to you tonight, and that's a tough thing to do at that age. I don't know that I could have pulled it off, frankly. But courageous that in a society that's not always so accepting, that they have found it within themselves to say who they are, and moreover, to be proud of who they are, and to take their rightful place in our society as Americans with the rights and privileges that we all enjoy under the United States Constitution. This is a statement, I get it. And I think it's really easy for cynical people to say, "Oh, well, what are you making such a big deal about a resolution that's non-binding? And listen, we've got coronavirus going on, and we've got the economy going into the tank, we've got all these other issues. Why are you taking the time to talk about this?" And I would say this. While all those other things are very important, and you, and I, and the legislature, and the federal government will all be dealing with those issues in the days and weeks and months ahead, the core of who we are as Americans is about our ability to understand that we are all equal. And we are all indeed endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights. And that goes for everybody, everybody in this room. And yeah, it's always important to pause and to recognize that. And it's always important to let our voices be heard on that. And it's always important, as elected officials, that we stand up and be counted. And that when the vote is taken and recorded, that our names are recorded on the right side of history in that regard. So as I said, I'm going to yield the floor, but before I leave, I want to ask you, I want to urge you, please reconsider your vote. Reconsider that motion, bring the resolution back up. You can do it tonight. It's a simple vote. And vote it, and show these kids that you respect what they've done and that you stand with them. Thank you all very much.
My name is Bob Swikus. I'm a resident of Newtown Borough. I'm a gay man. I lived a straight life, but now I am proud to be a member of the LGBT community. And also, as I serve as counsel to New Hope Pride for the last 17 years that have brought gay communities into the real world, I also serve as counsel to FACT, which has raised over $1 million for the last 15 years to help people with HIV, with AIDS. The gay community supports itself because nobody would support us before. We're here to ask you to support us. Why am I here? I hope that this board will step forward in a public forum to show support for a segment of our population who face tremendous challenges simply because of their sexual identity, orientation, and preference. I am here because I can talk the talk because I walk the walk. I am a member of this LGBT community, and I'm as proud as that, as I'm as proud as my Polish heritage, the fact that I'm an attorney, I'm an athlete, I'm an outstanding, excuse me, I'm a contributing member of my community, and nonprofits, and as an elected official in my community. I'm out. I'm proud that I'm out, and I'm proud that I have support in my community. I wouldn't be here without that support. I am as equal as anybody else under the law, and I am entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as these children are. I do not have to fight for equality because I am equal, as so as they are. However, we will fight intolerance, intolerance in the failure to protect our neighbors, to stand up and protect them, intolerance in failing to speak up when necessary. We will not stand on the sidelines. Our voices will be heard. What have I seen in my lifetime? In 1956, President Eisenhower signed an executive order deeming gay people ineligible to serve in the federal government. Frank Comney, the godfather of the gay pride movement, who I met before his death in 2011, graduated first in his class from Harvard and was hired by the U.S. Army Mat Service. He was outed and fired. He took his case to the Supreme Court twice, and the Supreme Court says, "There's nothing wrong with discrimination on sexual orientation." He cannot come back to the government. That happened in the early 60s. Thereafter, in Philadelphia, we had the first gay pride parade around Independence Hall in the early 60s before Stonewall. And people said, "They look just like us." They were gay people fighting for equality and intolerance, against intolerance. The lavender scares drove scores of individuals from the federal service. Many lost all they had. It was not until 1970 that homosexuality was removed from the list of mental illness. I grew up, I could have gone to jail because I was gay. I could have been institutionalized because I was gay. It was tough growing up. These individuals have the opportunity to be out, but they're still fighting every day for their life and liberties. From the time I was born to the time I was adult, I faced an inner fear of being outed. But I came out as an adult after losing my family, and I have parts of my family who will never talk to me again because I'm simply gay. That's a tough burden to wake up to every morning. I have worshipped with Bishop Gene Robinson, the first openly gay bishop of the Episcopal Church. I have broken bread with the Shepherd family, whose son was tied to a fence and beaten to death because he was gay. I was the chair of Team Philadelphia, an umbrella organization of the 11 sports groups in Philadelphia, serving over 1,200 people. The gay sports organization is now the backbone of the gay community. We don't have to hang out in bars and hide in safe sanctuaries. We are out there. We compete nationally, internationally. The gay people are out and proud and fighting against intolerance. I've also seen the AIDS crisis. I've lost many friends. Seeing the President of the United States refuse to use the word AIDS and failing to fund AIDS research. Compare that to where we are today. Millions and billions of dollars are being spent on a disease that we don't know about within six months of its being announced. Federal government and other governments need to step up. I have lost partners, not partners, but good friends in the last six months from suicide, drug overdose, and I have several friends who are missing. We can't find them. These are my gay friends, who as adults cannot exist because of the experiences that they have had. So why are we here tonight? We are here tonight because I believe this board failed this group of young people. You used different excuses not to pass that ordinance or a resolution. You failed to stand up for these young people who simply asked, "Please support us." The statistics are haunting. They have the highest rate of suicide. They have the highest rate of attempted suicide. They have the highest rate of homelessness. They have the highest rate of sex trafficking. We cannot abandon these youth. These are our children, our friends' children, our nephews, our nieces, our friends. They are the next leaders of our community. What did you say to them when you said, "We will not support you"? How do you think they felt that night when they heard the news, after Newtown Township was on the front page that they were going to address this resolution? Please don't fail them. Please pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
I'll just introduce myself while I'm writing my name. So I'm Heather Sinsel. I actually live in Percasie. And I am, I would have failed a public speaking class, so I'm very quickly speaking, but that's good with the size of the line. But I am also here today in support of LGBTQ youth. To those of you who did not pass the resolution to recognize February 5th as Love is Love Day, to support the LGBTQ youth, and to recognize the amazing prom organized and executed by the local youth, I respectfully ask you to reconsider. To me, this was a hateful act, and the point is that to me, it was a hateful act. Can you imagine how they felt? Not passing this resolution proves non-acceptance. That's simply unacceptable to me. That's a sad and disappointing realization as a parent of a transgender child. Most youth live their life authentically only behind closed doors and with close friends because they fear non-acceptance. My guess is that many youth you know personally would have began to thrive and live authentically if they had known that they had your support. I love the quote, I say it all the time, I should probably have a tattoo, and I urge you to think about it. Be careful who you hate. It could be someone you love. A thought I truly live by. My son is the bravest person I know, and he matters. They all matter. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Where am I supposed to write my name? Oh. Just anywhere. Well, there's like two spots that people are writing. All right. Hi, I'm James Sinsel. I'm her son. I am a River Room youth, as well as an LGBTQ activist. I just want you all to know that I don't know who the three people are that voted against it, and I don't need to know. I just need you all to vote for it tonight. I want you to know that it makes you look unaccepting, and it makes me and as well as many other LGBTQ youth feel unwanted and unwelcome here in Newtown Township. We will not be brushed off, and we don't want to be put under a mat or pushed away. We just want you to know that we want to be seen, and we want to be heard by all of you, and we want all of you to carefully consider this. So all of us just want to be valid in a community. As many speakers said that they have witnessed and they've seen, they've been through, like, unvalidation and stuff like that, and we just want to be valid to you and to your community. That's it.
My name is Lily. I live in Jamison, and I am a youth member of the Rainbow Room in Doylestown, and I was on the committee for the Love is Love prom. And what that meant to me, to be on the committee, was incredible. Because if you had seen the look on the kids' faces as they walked into the prom and the looks that they left with, you would have so much of a better understanding why this is necessary for us. The kids who were there came up to me personally and thanked me for helping to plan the prom because even though discrimination, even though Doylestown passed an ordinance that is anti-discrimination, it still exists, and there's still so much hate against LGBTQ youth. And to have a safe space where everyone was just so mindful of each other and everybody was just free to be themselves, and youth felt like they could really just ease into it and have a good time and be themselves, was just such a powerful experience for everyone. That is what a Love is Love community does for LGBTQ youth. And it's the same with something like this. The fact that you are just openly acknowledging and supporting that LGBTQ youth exist and are valued, it just creates this sense that lawmakers have our backs and that we are welcome and that we are safe and secure. And so the reason why we want the Love is Love Day to pass so badly is because it would help us to feel like we did at the prom, but every year. And it's just an incredible thing when these kinds of things come up because, like one of the speakers said before, like it didn't used to be like this. There was a time when same-sex marriage wasn't legal, and the big Supreme Court refused to make it legal, and it was illegal in the whole country. But even when that was a fact, many, many states took initiative, as lower governments, from the federal government, took initiative to make same-sex marriage legal and to have marriage equality in those states. And that helped to change people's mind to the point where people became so much more accepting, and there was so much more protesting, there was a general change in the public opinion that led to the eventual federal overturn. And that's what legal, that's what local ordinances like this do, is that it has to start from the bottom up. So as youth, we were super discouraged and upset to hear that the state senate refused to hear it or pass it. But youth still have a chance to help us change people's minds and to help us get there, because everything starts, it starts locally, and it's a buildup. So it would really help us to have that major effect, and eventually, maybe we could get it passed by the state senate. But until then, we really need this feeling of having that community and that the lawmakers have our backs, and so that every year on February 15th, we can feel like we did at the prom. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Mathyskin, and I'm making a statement on behalf of Kristin Mallon, an advisor of the Gender and Sexuality Awareness Club at Council Rock North. I am writing today to ask you to reconsider your votes regarding the Love is Love Day celebration. I have worked with LGBTQ students in the Council Rock District for the past 13 years. If you could see the way that some of our LGBTQ students have suffered rejection in our community, I know that you would have voted differently. As I hope you know, LGBTQ young people have the highest rates of depression, anxiety, suicide ideation, and completed suicide. And it is not because there's anything inherently wrong with them. Instead, it is due to the rejection they face. I have spent too many days sitting with students in crisis because of the outright bullying by students, teachers, and administrators in our community. I've counseled far too many young people who have threatened and attempted suicide because their families and community rejected them because of their identity. I've spoken with so many students who refuse to come out as LGBTQ because they fear that their parents will abandon them or their peers will hurt them. Representation matters, and a celebration like Love is Love is a chance for the community of Newtown to show LGBTQ youth that they belong. It is a chance for young people to show their pride in overcoming all of the homophobic and transphobic obstacles that society puts in their way. In your statements defending your decision to deny these young people a celebration, you oversimplified arguments, saying such things like, "What about Polish-Americans? What about people with curly hair? Won't they want a day to celebrate their differences?" Ask yourself this question. In 2020, can Polish-Americans be denied a job because of their identity? Are curly-haired people currently being bullied to the extent that over 40% of curly-haired individuals suffer suicide ideation? No, they can't and do not. But throughout much of the U.S., including the state of Pennsylvania, this is an experience of LGBTQ people. They suffer real discrimination and violence in our world. A public show that our community loves and accepts the LGBTQ community could make all the difference for a young LGBTQ person. I urge you to reconsider your votes, and I encourage you to join us on the right side of history in our support and celebration of civil rights and our LGBTQ youth. Thank you.
I'm a resident of the Newtown Township. I go to Council Rock High School North, and I'm on the board of the GSA at Council Rock North. I won't bore you with like the rest of my credentials and all the extra kills I'm involved in, because that's not really important to why I'm here, but I'm going to tell you why it's important that I'm here, why it's important that all the people behind me are here, and why it's important that you reconsider your vote on the Love is Love resolution today. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself, a little bit about the resolution, and then kind of why I think that it's important that we really consider what the resolution is about and that we really reconsider what it was saying. So I'm a student at Council Rock High School North. I've lived in Newtown since I was two years old. I'm 17 now, and my family loves living in Newtown. But a lot of my friends cannot love living in Newtown because Newtown doesn't love them back. The Newtown Township supervisors or the Newtown Township community has refused to step, take the steps to support them, and has refused to take the steps to acknowledge why they are important to our community, and has refused to take the steps to acknowledge their presence in our community. I am lucky enough to, I am lucky enough, sorry, let me rephrase that. I have been unlucky enough to never celebrate Valentine's Day, but that's not because of who I am as a person. I'm straight. I have not been disadvantaged because of my sexuality. I've not been disadvantaged because of who I am as a person. But the same cannot be said for my friends. The same cannot be said for the community members that I surround myself with. And so Love is Love Day is an extremely important step forward for these people of the community. It is an extremely important step forward for the LGBTQ members of our community. And so I can stand up here and give this statement because I recognize how important it is, and I urge you to recognize how important this resolution is in taking that step forward. Now, it was mentioned earlier that this is a resolution, and it's not something that's going to change any law. It's not going to be something that puts something into action, but it is a sentiment. It is a notion. It is an idea. And it was said that many of the chair support the notion of this, but they fear the exclusionary aspects of it. They fear that it will exclude others. But if you support the notion of this resolution, you support the resolution. That's the point. And so I'm really urging you guys here today to take a step back and consider that if you support the notion, if you support the ideas, you can support this resolution. It's not an exclusionary act, because lifting the voices up of a community does not exclude or hinder the voices of others. We just celebrated Black History Month and are entering Women's History Month, but that doesn't mean that we damper or hinder the voices of people who aren't black, or we damper or hinder the voices of people who aren't women. We still acknowledge them. We still acknowledge that they're full members of the community, but we also acknowledge and uplift the members of communities who have been oppressed or have been suppressed in their participation, and that's what this resolution represents. It would not exclude me. I understand that, because I'm not LGBTQ, but I recognize the importance of uplifting those who are. And so that's why I urge you to support this resolution. It's not exclusionary. There's uplifting- It's not exclusionary, because uplifting others doesn't exclude the rest of the community. And so I stand here really urging you to support this resolution because of its impacts. I'm 17 years old, so I didn't vote for you, but my parents did. The people who graduated from North that I know might have voted for you, but I didn't. And I didn't vote for you, but every person... But I didn't vote for you, but the LGBT residents of Newtown voted for you. And so I'm really urging you to be their representatives, to be their township supervisors. And so the federal government has failed to take action for them. The state government has failed to take action for them. And so I'm urging the local government, their Newtown Township Board, to take action for them. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alexa Schner. I'm a student at Council Rock North High School, and I'm a member of our GSA, or Gender Sexuality Board, along with Daisy, who just spoke. So you might get a little bit bored of my voice because I am making the speeches of three other people in addition to my own, but I think that that should tell you, in addition to the line that I have behind me and everybody who's spoken, that if you're representing your community, you are representing this resolution and you are in support of it. This resolution is supported by all the people behind me and all the people who couldn't make it, everybody. I don't understand what is controversial about love and what is exclusionary about love, but there's more to that. So I would like to begin by reading a statement of a friend of mine who couldn't be here tonight. "I'm a straight high schooler at Council Rock North, and I would absolutely not feel excluded by a Love is Love Day in our community. I feel proud to belong to a community that accepts and celebrates all love, and it upsets me that some supervisors fail to see how important a day like this would be. It would not only be important to the LGBT youth, but also cis youth, because it's always important to become more educated and to celebrate each other. In addition, Love is Love is not exclusionary to straight people, because the very phrase itself exemplifies the acceptance of all love." Another message from a student who is not speaking at the moment. "I didn't know what being gay meant until I was in the sixth grade. I didn't know any of the other LGBT+ identities until eighth grade. I didn't know what being trans or non-binary was until ninth grade. These aspects of human existence were hidden from me for so long, and I spent so long thinking that I was broken for not adhering to the cis heteronormative society in which we live. I'm bisexual and non-binary. I have known this about myself for about six months, and I am privileged enough to be surrounded by an educated and supportive peers. However, if a handful of things would have gone differently, I never would have been able to realize this aspect of my life. The amount of queer representation, or rather, lack thereof, that I see is abhorrent to me. LGBT+ identities are not taught in schools, are not featured in mainstream media, and are generally not accepted throughout society. Creating a Love is Love Day to stand for and represent queer youth will be a monumental advancement in bringing to light what may be a life-changing realization to youth through Newtown. It is my hope that others will be able to know more about themselves and others than I was able to at a young age. This resolution can be a first step towards creating this environment." And now I have one other speech before I get to my own. "Good evening. I'm asking you tonight to reconsider your vote on Love is Love Day. Revolution. While Newtown Township has made great strides in the past few years in advancing LGBTQ rights, specifically the Anti-Discrimination Ordinance, I feel the Board is making a mistake by voting against the resolution. Love is Love celebrates all love. Love knows no gender, nor does it have any race, religion, or disability. This Day is not exclusively to members of any orientation, but denying this resolution perpetuates the exclusion of LGBTQ youth from our larger community. I'm thankful that as a lesbian in the 21st century, I can live openly and honestly, more so than those in the LGBT community before me. Yet I still face discrimination, including being called a sexual deviant and getting told gay people are repulsive. Our world is not perfect. Bigotry pervades our community, but we have the opportunity to stand out in support of LGBTQ parents, children, siblings, and friends. I hope you choose to reconsider your decision. Thank you." I think something that has been highlighted, and everybody who's spoken before me and all of the people who I've read speeches for, is that this resolution is not exclusionary in the slightest. It is the opposite of that. It is about love. Love is not controversial. I have spoken in front of you guys on a far more controversial issue, and there was far less dissent. I don't understand what's controversial about love and about supporting our community. As a Newtown native, I know that this community should be standing for acceptance and love, and that we are. So I don't understand why the people who represent us are not willing to sign this resolution, and that's why I urge you completely to reconsider your opinion on this resolution. It is not exclusionary. It would help validate the people of our community who perhaps don't feel that validation in their homes or in their schools. High school kids can be tough. I'm sure you guys all know that. Having this resolution tells a student who maybe doesn't have that friend group or isn't able to be part of the GSA like I am, or maybe doesn't have accepting parents like I do, or who are sitting here supporting all of us tonight. This resolution tells them that in Newtown, they are safe, they are loved. There's nothing exclusionary about that. If your concern is exclusion, and there are plenty of other issues we can address, this is adding to this. As Daisy said before me, raising another's voice does not dim the person who was speaking first. By bringing to light a community that is not often represented in media, we are not hiding the people who were speaking before them. This is not a day of exclusion. This is a day of love. And I urge you all to... I urge the three of you who didn't vote yes to this resolution to reconsider and to vote yes, because this is for love. Newtown should be about love, and if it is about love, then I'd like our township to... I'd like you guys to... Sorry. I'd like you guys to represent that as our representatives. Thank you.
I'm a senior at Council Rock North, and I also happen to be gay. I'd like to start off by saying that by being here, I risk getting in trouble at home. If my parents find out I'm here supporting LGBT+ rights, I may not have a college fund. And that's just how important that being here and supporting this is to me. I know a large objection to this Day is the fact that it feels exclusionary, and I have been out to my peers, more like outed to my peers, since eighth grade, which is almost four years now. I know what it feels like to be excluded. I'm not talking about exclusion from activities or special days. I'm talking about exclusion from basic rights and everyday things that straight people take for granted. The only fear straight people have in holding their significant other's hands in public is that they'll be too sweaty, or in modern-day coronavirus. I'm afraid that I will not be able to protect my girlfriend from someone trying to hurt us for just holding hands. More than one in every four queer people have been attacked or threatened for their sexuality. Straight people can kiss goodbye without a second thought. I have been sexualized, filmed, and harassed just for that, a goodbye kiss. I am only 17 years old. I have experienced more hate and dirty looks than most of you here will experience in your entire lifetime. I'm not even a quarter of the way through my life. Love is Love Day is not exclusionary. It is including every member of the LGBTQ+ community, something many of us are not used to. I'm not asking you to exclude people who are normally included. I am asking you to include people who are normally excluded. Thank you for your time.
My name is David Brea. Most of you know me. I was before this Board last year to present some background information about the Anti-Discrimination Ordinance that you passed at that time. And before I go any further, I do just want to say thank you for this Board's action on that issue. It was significant in that you were the first township in all of Bucks County. So I do want to extend my thanks and acknowledge the work that you've done on that. I also tonight speak to you as an alumnus of the Rainbow Room in Doylestown, which is the organization that put together the LGBTQ prom that took place on February 15th. My participation in that organization when I was in high school was so important to me because it was the first time that I had examples in my life, I had role models in my life, that showed me that I had a future as a young queer person. There wasn't a lot on TV, there wasn't a lot in media, there wasn't much for us to look up to. And the experience was significant, and it made a huge impact. Discrimination happens all the time still today, and that is why we need messages of support, such as this Love is Love resolution. And I'm going to share two recent experiences. One happened to a colleague, one happened to myself, just so we have an understanding of what we're talking about, and that it's not just the type of thing that happens in high school and goes away. Last November, my friend, Dr. Jessica Rothschild, was elected to the Scranton City Council. It's a position she had to fight hard to earn. It's a big constituency. It was a hard race. At her council meeting at the beginning of March, she couldn't attend. As you know, business comes up, you can't make every meeting. And during public comment at that session, a member of the community stood up and referred to her as him, he, a man, intentionally misgendered her because she is a queer woman. And while that happened, her four colleagues on that board sat in silence. I, about a week ago, published an op-ed in the Bucks County Courier-Times. It was reflecting on the candidacy of Mayor Pete Buttigieg for president. It wasn't about supporting him or not supporting him. It was about acknowledging how important it was to see an out gay person so clearly in the public eye. And I reflected upon what it would have meant to me when I was the age of so many of the speakers tonight, to have been able to see that, and to be able to understand that there was hope and a bright future. Someone in my community, who is known to me, decided to take that opportunity to post the article all over not only her social media, but mine and that of the borough, to call me a joke, an embarrassment, the laughingstock of Yardley. These are painful experiences. We're not always supposed to admit that. We're supposed to, as public officials, sometimes pretend that we're not affected by what people say about us, but the truth is, it still hurts. And if it still hurts myself, if it still hurts Dr. Rothschild, as elected officials, we're in positions of power. And I want everyone to think about what it feels like when you're still wandering the halls of your high school at 16, trying to figure out who you are. And if you're adding a dimension of queerness to all of that, it is so much more complicated. You know, reflecting on that time, I realized that a newspaper headline that said a local government had passed a resolution supporting my community and saying that Love is Love, it would have built me up so high. And to see, but also to see a headline that went the other way, that said it failed, that would have hurt. It would have torn me down. You have an opportunity to correct that tonight. I know that many of you have concerns about the specifics of the resolution. Nothing is perfect. I know, as a board member myself in Yardley, that rarely do we consider anything we vote on to be perfect. But I ask all of you to consider the message it sends, and consider sending that message to those who need to hear it most. It's simple to do. I ask that you reconsider. Thank you.
My name is Bob Lutz from the Green Parrot. First of all, Love is Love, congratulations. You'll always be welcomed at the Green Parrot. You'll always be treated fairly. I guess some of the Board members got a letter from somebody the other day. I guess I'm here to clear up some inaccuracies, some misconceptions about somebody that wrote a letter to the Board and it was forwarded to me, and I had a conversation, but the person kind of described me as being despicable and responsible for excessive noise, traffic, drunken patrons, blah, 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 and whatever. I'm here to say the Green Parrot is not shutting down any streets this year. We're not involved with the run, and there will be no tent. So I don't know where this lady got that. I'm sure you guys are privy to that information. We respect the Board. We respect the police. We will do everything as good citizens, small businessmen, to do and work within the laws of Newtown. I respectfully ask you guys to just make sure, like it says in here, that I have the Board on my side. I do illegal things to turn around and get what I want. That has not been the case, you know? So respectfully, I just want to get it out there that we are not doing what we've done before, and we're containing everything inside, and we will be law-abiding and do whatever. And if anybody has any comments to me that I should adjust things, I'm all ears. I will do whatever I can to make life easier in Newtown. Thank you very much.
Bobby Lutz, good guy. Green Parrot's a good place. Glad that they bring a lot of business to this township. Letter was probably somebody from the Borough. Borough gets involved in everything. You know, it's a fact that some of you know, some of you might not know, Newtown Grant has more residents than the Borough. Everybody brings up the Borough, "Oh, the Borough did this, the Borough did that." Well, Newtown Grant has more residents. That's almost a third of the population of Newtown. So should be listening to Newtown Grant, not to the Borough. Anyhow, a lot of the students that came up tonight, very good, give them an A+ in their composition and public speaking and all that stuff, but give them an F, F- on facts, because I was here at the last meeting when you guys voted down the thing, and you didn't vote down love. Everybody's for love. These guys come up here and say, "Oh, you're against love." You're not against love.
How did you know? Get in the hell, John.
Let this guy talk again. I used to work with his brother, and he's a character. Anyhow, you guys voted against a day, setting aside a day. You weren't against Love Resolution, which is great. And I spoke about, you know, different holidays it should be, and again, somebody brings up a high rate of suicide and homelessness and depression and all that stuff. Vietnam vets, nobody tops that, no one. And I'd like to see a Vietnam Vet resolution. Talk about being a bad time in this country's history during that time. But we were called, we served. Wearing a uniform to fly, to take trains and stuff like that, you got a discount because you're military, you're in a uniform. I chose not to wear it. I used to pay extra, my $90 a month salary when I was only private, because everybody... You know, you got cursed at. You got... So I know persecution. They bring up hate. Nobody hates anybody here, you know? Everybody loves, you know, people. Do-nothing Steve is here. You know, he does nothing. He does nothing. He's milking this to the T. You know, he brings up one resolution in what, in all the years he's been a politician? You know, and people keep on voting him in. I can't understand it. Old guy can't even read my writing over here. But the main thing is, I wanted to tell people about the Borough. Newtown Grant's got more residents. Come on, guys.
My name is Marlene Prey. I'm the director and the founder of Planned Parenthood's Rainbow Room. I'm also a former appointed member of the Bucks County Human Relations Council and a former council member of the Doylestown Borough Council, which is where I live. 68% of LGBTQ youth... 68% of LGBTQ youth say they hear negative messages about being LGBTQ from elected officials. 77% of LGBTQ teenagers surveyed report feeling depressed or down over the past week. 95% of LGBTQ youth report trouble sleeping at night. More than 70% report feelings of worthlessness and hopelessness in the past week. Only 26% say they always feel safe in their school classrooms and just 5% say that all of their teachers and school staff are supportive of LGBTQ people. 77% report that they've heard family members make negative comments about LGBTQ people. So the original request from the Rainbow Room youth, who include many youth from Council Rock and from here in Newtown Township, to our state legislature and our local elected officials to recognize Love is Love Day on February 15th, 2020, had absolutely nothing to do with Valentine's Day, so I just want to clear that up. It was to honor, to recognize, to uplift and support the first ever county-wide LGBTQ+ prom held on this date and organized by the youth of the Rainbow Room, where I serve as director. And as each passionate supporter and advocate acted on that, they added their own personal and relevant pieces and components to it, all while keeping the focus on celebrating LGBTQ+ youth and their prom, which was named Love is Love, a queer prom for all here in Bucks County. The goal was to surprise, of these resolutions was originally to surprise the prom committee by presenting them at the prom, which we did, along with the Philly Pride flag, which was gifted from Lieutenant Governor Fetterman and which hung in our Capitol in Harrisburg and now belongs here to Bucks County. The Bucks County Commissioners voted unanimously and issued a resolution, as did Newtown Borough, in honor of Love is Love Day and the youth and the prom. It was a wonderful two-minute moment of a spectacular night celebrating queer youth and community. Over 150 youth from 57 different schools, including Council Rock, attended the sold-out, although it was free, but it was sold-out, event. Many of these youth, again, attend high school and middle school here in Council Rock. The intention or even choice of the date of our prom on February 15th was never about Valentine's Day. In fact, the Rainbow Room youth who dreamed up this prom years ago and planned it, did not want it tied into Valentine's Day when we settled on that date with the Mitchener Art Museum. And yes, Valentine's Day is often difficult and exclusionary for LGBTQ+ youth, as Senator Sanisero pointed out in his drafted resolution, which failed to pass in the state senate. But the Love is Love name and idea to honor are not connected in any desire or hope to create some new type of Valentine's Day. Love is love is a phrase that matters to the queer community. It was echoed the night of the Pulse nightclub massacre, June 12th, 2016, when 49 people in a gay nightclub were murdered for being part of the LGBTQ+ community. That night, Lin-Manuel Miranda, an outspoken advocate for LGBTQ+ rights and racial justice, brought many of us to tears when he recited these poignant words at the Tony Awards just hours after the shooting. When senseless acts of tragedy remind us that nothing here is promised, not one day, that nothing, that this show is proof that history remembers, we live through times when hate and fear seem stronger, we rise and fall and light from dying embers, remembrances that hope and love last longer, and love is love is love is love is love is love cannot be killed or swept away. Love is love, there it is, in the aftermath of murder, of injustice, of racism, homophobia, of hatred, and brought forward again on Saturday, February 15th, 2020, when 150 youth and their adult allies cast fear and harassment and discrimination and name-calling and rejection and cliques and prejudice aside to dress up, walk hand in hand down the red carpet into the glass ballroom of the Mitchener Art Museum and have one of the best nights of their lives. And beyond what is customary at many proms, we had a unique, intensive and multi-layered safety and security plan and system in place because hate, prejudice, guns, because of moments like Pulse Orlando. A resolution that celebrates this historic moment in our community, the Love is Love, a queer prom for all, which celebrates our LGBTQ+ youth here in Newtown Township, which sends a message specifically to them that they are loved and seen and valid, it matters and it may even save lives. Voting against it, postponing it, tabling it, or diluting it as for all youth, or allowing ourselves to somehow get sidetracked and focused on Valentine's Day, these are distractions at best and dangerous and harmful attacks at worst. And finally, I'm going to take, one of the things that we gave every single youth who came to prom is one of these pins that says Love is Love. And I'm going to give it to the chair here. But I don't give you permission to wear it until you lead this esteemed Board of Supervisors in supporting the LGBTQ+ youth and the historic Love is Love prom that Newtown Township youth attended by voting in support of a Love is Love resolution to honor them. Thank you.
Forgot to sign in last time. I just have one point of information. Are, is the board planning on voting on this resolution tonight or bringing it back up? It's not on the agenda, so I'm just curious about that.
Well, I think that in order to do that, Mr. Solicitor, can the board take a 15-minute break and discuss this in private? And just to clarify some things, you are wrong. We always said up here that we were for love. No one said they were not for love. And to be called haters, I don't think is a fair thing of us.
I called you shame. I didn't call you a hater.
You said that we didn't, we said that we didn't want love.
I said shame on you, you didn't vote for love.
And everyone up here on that evening, and you could go watch the video online, had said that we are for love. We just had a couple situations, a couple issues, one of them being the date, which I understand is not important, but it was important to the presenter that night who said that that date was written in stone. So there are some things we can discuss, maybe in private and come back and we can't go in caucus on this? Well, then I'll leave it to the board if they want to, if they want to bring this up again for the resolution. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think, and the Solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the appropriate motion would be a motion to reconsider the other vote. If that motion passes, then a motion to bring the resolution up for a vote would be in order.
Well, again, I'm asking, I guess, the woman that was up here before, the president or the leader of, I don't know what you're, Mrs. Prey, is that, I'm sorry. Can you come up here for a second? I just have a question for you. Now, is it my understanding that February 15th just happened to be an arbitrary date that happened to be after Valentine's Day?
Correct. That was the date that the Mitchener Art Museum offered.
So if a resolution were to have the wordage of, and plus, this resolution isn't going to be effective on 2021.
That's up to you. You could make it an annual thing. That, that was, I mean, and like I said, each individual that, each municipality that took this on, the county commissioners, they just uplifted with very little controversy. Oh, Love is Love Day, February 15th, we have a historic event happening? Absolutely. They issued a proclamation, they came to the prom and presented it. That was, and we didn't ask Newtown Township, I appreciate that Supervisor Mac offered that.
But if, if it could be, if it could be worded, a date to be determined.
Well, I mean, you could.
And as it got to that date, we announced that date. Is that something that is?
Unless, I would actually defer that to the township, to the Newtown Township youth that were here tonight, for them to, if they want to have an annual day uplifting that here in Newtown Township, we will stand behind that, just as I would if you had a day honoring Vietnam Veterans Day.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, could it be February 15th? Could it be February 25th?
I mean, you could do it tonight and just honor that there was a historic event that many youth from this community participated in on February 15th, in the county seat of this county that we are all privileged to live in, called Love is Love, the Love is Love prom, and that you celebrate in honor with them. I've written resolutions before when I was on Borough Council, it may be a little different for supervisors in a township, but it's not, I mean, I know, I realize it's a little tricky to retroactively say we honor that, but I still think you can do that. We honor that Love is Love Day was February 15th. I think you can honor it after the fact.
Well, we don't want to deal in the past, we want to go forward. So we like to maybe make a determination, is the 15th good in perpetuity? I mean, do we just?
We are not having a prom on Monday, February 15th of 2021, for example.
Well, exactly, okay.
Because it's also a Monday.
All right. So, but I mean, it could be a date to be determined.
But I don't think you need to wait. I think you could vote on it and pass it tonight. I happen to know a little bit about municipal law and I don't know that you actually need to or allowed to recess right now and have an executive session over a resolution.
Yeah, we could vote on it tonight.
Sunshine law requires you to talk about this with people present and allowed to be there.
But again, but again, this resolution will not take effect until next year.
Why can't it take effect right now? Honoring Love is Love Day is February 15th of 2020, here on this date of March 11th.
But it already passed.
We're honoring that it was a historic date, just in the same way that if there was a historic act that happened, for example, I know when I was on Borough Council, we had police officers who conducted historic acts. We didn't wait for the next year to come to celebrate the anniversary of them rescuing somebody from a fire or a fatal, nearly fatal car accident. We recognized it after the fact. It seems like this came up to Newtown after the fact. That's totally fine, that everybody doesn't know everything going on, certainly a, you know, group of, I'm assuming, you know, men in Newtown Township might not know what all the funky queer kids are doing all over the county on February 15th. So honoring it now as something that happened that was historic and significant and sending a message of support and love and frankly, an apology for any either direct statements that were made or interpretations. I think there's some also back and forth about we're haters, we're not, you're not haters. No, but the message was pretty clear and I watched the, and read the entire, watched the entire video of what was said by many of you that night and the message was, there was a strong message and I think tonight is the night to send a different message. And I don't think we need to wait on that or delay it. It's not about next year. I mean, you can honor it next year when that comes around if you want to, but it's happening right now and this conversation is happening right now.
Kyle, you want something to say?
Yeah, so I want to thank everyone for coming up today. I know it took a lot of courage for a lot of you. And I thought it made it clear in the last two meetings where we discussed this, I was fully in support of the cause of supporting LGBTQ youth. I didn't have a problem with it. I had a problem with, it was going, I think it was more of a dispute on how the resolution was laid out, in my opinion. And I was trying to affect that with, to no effect, it didn't work. The changes that I wished to make were not honored by the rest of the board, so it failed. I don't, I'm not a hater. I'm completely in support of the resolution to support the group. I don't have a problem with going back and correcting the wrong perhaps that we, you know, missed the special day that was in question. The problem is, we didn't know that was what really was going on. We, this came down to us as like a holiday, it didn't, it wasn't very clear. So I think I could vote for a resolution to correct that. This has gotten way out of hand. Like I said, I didn't expect the blowback. I was trying to, we got a resolution slapped in front of me, I'm not going to pass it without some discussion on it. And I made my points clear in two meetings prior to the defeat of that resolution. So I don't have a problem voting for it. This is, I don't want to make this about hate. This is getting to be about hate. That wasn't why I said no. So if we can clear that up now and pass it, I'm on board with it. I don't think that was the intent of this board. It certainly wasn't the intent of me to have it blow up the way it did in this manner, to make everyone here feel bad and have to come and talk to us tonight. So I just wanted to make that clear. Never was about not recognizing the group and your struggle, so that's all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Oxley.
I would like to also echo Kyle's comments by just giving you all the young youth here kudos in terms of standing up there and expressing your journey, expressing the challenge and the struggle that you go through on a daily basis. And in terms of the resolution, I mean, I'm all about love. I give hugs as much as I can. But what I wanted out of the resolution in terms of some amendments was, I have some children that go to school in this township, in this school district, and my son, he doesn't look like the rest of his siblings because they're biracial and he's 100% African-American. And when he joined the school district, when he was in fifth grade, in fifth grade in recess, he was called the N-word by a classmate of his at recess. And my son had just moved to this township. And for me as a father, to deal with that was heartbreaking because, you know, I'm trying to, I uprooted him out of his home with his mom and to give him a level of consistency, and I thought that that was going to be a good thing for him and for him to experience that on the recess schoolyard in fifth grade was awful. And it happened again in eighth grade. And all I wanted was an inclusion with the youth here to have something with minorities. I didn't even say African-American last time. I just said, there's kids out there that are different, that look different and so forth. My little girl's seven years old and some kid on the bus told her her hair looked different. Why does your hair look like that? So if you understand where I'm coming from with that, I'm not against any of what you're telling, what you're saying. The struggle is real. I understand that. I just wanted to know if there's an opportunity that we can include some other folks in it, is all. And I'm happy to vote for it if we can, we can bridge a gap there with that. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
I was really looking forward to hearing your comments this evening. It's real important to me. I think we can get a 5-0 vote. I wanted to get a 5-0 vote. As a young person, I was bullied. And I'm straight. I've been through name-calling, I've been through getting in fights. I know how difficult it is. So I've always been in favor of this. I will continue to be in favor of it. Whatever modifications we may or may not make, I think we need to vote. I think we need to have a 5-0 decision for all of us.
Well, I'll throw this to Mr. Max and she was the presenter and still is the presenter. I don't know if there are any modifications or anything that you want to do to this resolution tonight. You've heard the concerns of the board and of the public. And I'll leave it to you. You could bring it up, bring it up again.
Well, I have had, I think, extensive discussions with people on Facebook and privately about this and even some members of the board, but I haven't shared all of what I've learned. But I wanted to wait until tonight to hear what was said by everybody here to figure out if we can come up with a resolution that would achieve the goals that you want to achieve. And what I've heard tonight basically was, we want to stand with these people, we want to show support, we want to recognize the amazing prom and acknowledge and support the existence and the value of LGBTQ youth. I did draft a revision of this. I haven't shared it with all the members of the board yet because, as I said, I wanted to hear the comments from people and make sure it resonated with that. And I don't know how to go about approving this because... to go about approving this because the board hasn't seen it. But I was going to suggest that, I don't want to delay this either, but I think this is such a great learning experience. And we have a human relations commission that may be able to work with the high school students from Newtown to review any draft, maybe the draft I have written up, and come to a consensus as to the revision that might be something that the board could look at and approve. So, I don't know what the proper procedure is. I'm okay with, if we want to make a minor revision to the one we currently have and vote on it tonight, that's fine. I don't know how we do that, but I'll get some advice from our solicitor on that.
Well, do you have a copy of the draft that you said you revised some things on?
I do.
Why don't you, why don't you read it if you want to?
Okay. Bear with me. It's titled, "The Resolution of the Township of Newtown, Bucks County, Pennsylvania: Recognizing the Love is Love Day Prom and Its Support of LGBTQ Youth in the Newtown Township Community." Obviously, this is a resolution dealing with Newtown, but we want to make that clear. And there's a where, there are a few where-ases. And the first where-ase is, "The Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township was the first township in Bucks County, PA, to pass an anti-discrimination ordinance that created a human relations commission to protect the rights of all citizens in the township without regard to actual or perceived race, color, gender, religion, ancestry, genetic information, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, familial status, marital status, age, mental or physical disability, use of guide or support animals, and/or mechanical aids." Now, by the way, this language is, I hope and I believe, in every bid that we send out, who, contractors who want to do work in Newtown have to abide by that provision of our ordinance. Now, I go on to another where-ase. "Whereas being an adolescent during a time when those around you are expressing their love for each other can be overwhelming, especially if you do not see examples you identify with." Now, this where I took out the Valentine's Day reference, which people were mentioning here. Another where-ase, "According to the Peace Center, LGBTQ-plus minority youth in our community face harassment, violence, and discrimination. Whereas the rate of suicide among teenagers within the LGBT-plus, Q-plus community is nearly four times higher than for their heterosexual peers. And whereas the Rainbow Room LGBTQ youth organization hosted a Love is Love prom on February fifteenth, 2020, at the Mitchna Art Museum for LGBTQ youth and their allies. And whereas accepting the LGBTQ-plus minority youth in our community and in society at large helps remind those who we care about that love is love regardless of how they identify. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, that Newtown Township supports all youth and especially LGBTQ-plus minority youth in our community and the organizations that provide support to them during a time when they are the most vulnerable." That's my draft.
Well, now that Mr. Mack has read that, I'll ask the board if they need any further referencing to this, or if they find what this, this reading of a particular motion. Dennis?
I'm fine with it.
David?
I'm fine with it.
All right. So, I'm going to say that, John, you just made a motion. I will entertain a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second. Any further questions from the board? Any questions from the public on the motion?
I would propose one word change, partly in light of the mention about how vulnerable other populations are, including youth of color. Maybe instead of saying especially LGBTQ youth, because it's not, this is not a special right or special recognition, to maybe say Newtown Township supports all youth and uplifts and celebrates rather than and especially. That, so just, it's just my one suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Mack, we have that revision?
Yes. Fine with me.
Second?
Second's fine with me.
Okay. We got that revision. Are there any other revisions before we, we keep going on? Anyone else would like to come up and mention, talk about the motion?
Anybody want to talk about love?
I do.
I think love and love.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the board for considering this. I urge you to vote in favor of the motion. And I'd like to just say in response to your comments, Mr. Oxley, what your kids have endured is absolutely unacceptable. And every one of us in this community, and I pledge to you myself, will stand with you and fight to make sure that never happens again. And we, as a community in Newtown and across Bucks County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and everywhere in the United States, need to stand up with one voice and say racism is absolutely unacceptable, and no child and no human being should ever have to endure it. And we will work and make sure that happens, and we'll make a statement, and we'll do more than that moving forward. So, thank you for sharing that with all of us.
All right. We have a motion in a second. No further comments, so I will call the question. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Woo!
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming up. I think all of you are very courageous. And to the young lady who is going to possibly lose her college funding.
She had to leave.
She had to leave, but I, I, I think that your parents would be proud of you instead of not liking what you did. So, I think the board is going to take about a five-minute break, and we will, we will come back to conduct some other business.
[applause]
Philadelphia's Classic Rock, 102.9 M G K. Listen in your car, at work.
Did you get that memo?
And now on your Amazon Echo. Just say Alexa, open M G K.
[music]
All right. We have a motion in a second. No further comments, so I will call the question. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Woo!
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming up. I think all of you are very courageous. And to the young lady who is going to possibly lose her college funding.
She had to leave.
She had to leave, but I, I, I think that your parents would be proud of you instead of not liking what you did. So, I think the board is going to take about a five-minute break, and we will, we will come back to conduct some other business.
[applause]
Philadelphia's Classic Rock, 102.9 M G K. Listen in your car, at work.
Did you get that memo?
And now on your Amazon Echo. Just say Alexa, open M G K.
[music]
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're on with the show here. We have no minor approvals, no public hearings. We'll go right into reports of committees, boards, and commissions. And I think, will you, somebody wake up, Mrs. Driscoll?
(laughing).
You're on.
Okay. Good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. We met last Tuesday, March 3rd, and reviewed two items of business. A land development for Penn's Trail Investments, preliminary as final, and a JMZO amendment for a short-term rental. We did not have a quorum at our last meeting. Our first item was land development. Penn's Trail Investments presented a preliminary as final plan for land development of three Penn's Trail. They revised the original proposed 24,000-square-foot, two-story office building to a one-story building slightly less than 19,000 square feet. Responses were provided to the review letters, and all items are will comply. The intended use for the building was presumed to be medical; however, it won't be known for sure until the tenant is secured. The commission members who were present supported this application. And our next item was the JMZO amendment. The commission reviewed the amended ordinance for short-term rental, revisiting the definition of "family," and after a lengthy discussion, found it to need further clarification. The solicitor attended the joint, will attend the jointure meeting to determine the purpose of this amendment and get additional details. The commission members present were not able to make a recommendation on the ordinance at this time, but I have just, later today, I received an email. Actually, Jerry and I attended the jointure meeting, and they did make some changes, answered some of the questions that we did have, clarified some things. So, next week at our Planning Commission meeting, I'll give a copy of all the, of the email to all the members, and we'll go over it, and I think we'll be able to clear it up, and, and we'll discuss it on our next, at your next meeting. Anyone have any questions?
Peggy, do we know if they have been circulated to the other planning commissions yet? I know, I know that we're on a, a time schedule.
No, they weren't. The supervisors have.
But the supervisors haven't forwarded to their planning, Mike, do you know?
This is for the, what ordinance is this, is this for?
For the E-30.
Okay. It hasn't gone to the planning commission?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any estimated time of when it will go?
Hopefully soon. We are on a time crunch with this.
There was a, there was a timeline submitted, right?
Yeah, there was. I thought you, I thought you also.
I was under the impression that the jointure voted to send it to the planning commissions. I, maybe I got misinformation.
That's correct, Mr. Sander, that's correct. It just hasn't gone to the planning commission yet.
Okay, but it will for their next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
I think the supervisors and the other townships wanted to kind of get something concrete before they gave it to their planning commissions. We were originally given it, we were the first planning commission in the jointure to receive it, so.
Well, you received it from the board straight away.
Correct.
Before it went to the jointure, because we're the originating municipality, and you guys had first shot at it. You made some, several comments that were then sent to the Joint Zoning Council for discussion and incorporation into the ordinance, but there's been other things that, other comments that the solicitors for Wrightstown and Upper Mayfield have made, and their board members, so the ordinance has been amended, and I was under the impression that it was authorized to be sent to all of the planning commissions now for a review.
Well, at the, at the February meeting, that was the impression I got, is that their planning commissions were meeting later in the month, and they would be getting them, but I, Mr. Mack, you were there.
They had a special, on what day it was at again, I forget, the 3rd?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. They started early so that they could make all the changes that they wanted to this amendment, and I think at the end of that meeting, it was decided at that time to send these to the, to the various planning commissions.
And I believe Mrs. Everly actually developed a, a schedule.
Right.
That's correct. She recently sent the schedule out. We reviewed it. We actually had a change, because one of Newtown's meetings was going to be the second meeting in the summer, which may or may not happen, and we can't count on it happening, so that we asked them to push it back a little bit, and I believe she did.
Okay. Is someone going to keep up on, on this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one other quick question. The short-term rental amendment, amended ordinance for the short-term rental, is there any timeline on that, or is that just as?
I don't believe so, and it was, I, it was brought up by Upper Mayfield in reference to the Airbnbs. I think they're trying to put some restriction on the rentals.
But there's no time limit?
Not that I know of.
No, there's no time limit on that one.
No. But like I said, I'll, I'll forward this email that we got from Mrs. Everly at our next meeting, and I think we'll be able to clear it all up.
Great. Thank you, Peggy.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, board members. Chair, I have nothing to report, except that we passed the Love is Love ordinance tonight, if you missed that one, so. Mr. Fisher?
I'll abbreviate my report. I had a, met with the Finance Committee last evening, and they are ready, willing, and able to assist the township in the, working with the eConsult Solutions on our, on our financial consulting project, looking at the township finances and getting this one a five-year, five-year budget cycle. That, and the other highlight of my week was to participate in Science, Super Science Sunday, and I lost my voice. There were so many young families there that, I was doing a demonstration, I lost my voice about an hour in, so that was, that was a fun, fun time, talking to children about keeping our water clean. And last of all, went to a ribbon-cutting ceremony for solstice, which opened on Monday, I believe. Thanks.
Mr. Mack?
Yes, I have a few things for us from the Environmental Advisory Council. I think, as everybody knows, they're going to have Homeowners Association Forum here on Saturday, April 6th, and they're working on getting registration information out to HOA's representatives, so if you are on the board of an HOA, please contact, I guess you can contact our town manager, or we'll have a registration form out there for you, a link on the website, soon. They also adopted a set of recommendations for environmental provisions to be included in the Newtown Area Comprehensive Plan, which will be submitted to the Planning Commission. I guess Peggy left. There was a discussion about a draft resolution in support of a voluntary ban on the use of plastic bags in the Village of Newtown Shopping Center, and they reviewed examples of resolutions passed by other townships, and a representative from the EAC would like to come before the board to make a presentation as soon as possible. They have plans for participating on Earth Day, which is April 25th. The activities are in Core Creek Park. They also would like to write an article for the Green Corner of Township Newsletter, Mr. Lewis, but there was some confusion about when the next issue of the newsletter will come out, and what's the deadline for submitting content?
The next issue will be the summer issue.
It'll be the summer issue?
Yeah, spring one is going to print right now.
But the summer issue, you, they still commit the deadline to put something in there?
Yeah.
You know approximately what date it's?
Mid-April.
Mid-April. That's what I told them, so I'm glad I gave them the correct information. And the last thing, there was a representative from Delancey Court, Homeowners Association, who was trying to inquire about the replacement of trees, and wanted to know what are acceptable native trees, but they say they might have a problem because the, Delancey Court is not yet dedicated, they're still owned by Toll Brothers, and they're not allowed to cut down trees yet?
Is it just the roadways that are not dedicated, or?
No, the public improvements haven't been dedicated yet. In the springtime, CKS is going to go out there to Delancey Court and do a punch list of what trees need to be replaced, and give it to the developer, which they'll be required to replace them.
Okay, because there was some discussion that they're planting the wrong types of trees in the wrong places, and things like that.
That, we'll leave that up to the engineer.
Okay, great. I also attended a meeting of the Newtown Fire Association. They mentioned there's going to be an ac hunt at Station 55 here, Easter Ac Hunt, on March 28th, and they're going to, they review the specs, they're continuing to review the specs for a new fire truck, and they say those, their comments will be ready in April. They've, they have a new probationary member, a high school student from Holland, and I just wanted to note that our fire chief foresight, in his weekly report, mentioned that on March 1st, firefighter, firefighter Bill Fabian suffered a fractured leg at a dwelling fire in Northampton, and he underwent surgery on Thursday, March 5th, to repair the damage to his leg, and he is currently resting at home, so I hope he has a speedy recovery. Last, but not least, March 14, 3/14, is Pi Day. P.I., as in that Greek letter. It's the symbol used in mathematics to represent a constant, the ratio of the circumference of a circle to its diameter. And that's it for me, thank you.
And who says there isn't a day for everything? But anyway, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, well, we had the Veterans Committee meeting two weeks ago, had a few people attend. We're looking at getting more members out, so if anyone out in the public is interested, please let us know. There's nothing really to report out of that meeting, other than we're trying to, you know, get things rolling. I also have the Park and Rec report. We have special events coming up. There's Touch a Truck and Sports Expo on April 8th. Stop by Veterans Park and see how close to big, hard-working trucks you see driving around town. While you're there, check out the new Sports Expo with a variety of sports groups from around the area. Some upcoming programs with Park and Rec, we have Little Hoop Stars Basketball, there's Dippin' in Green for St. Patrick's Day, there's a chess club, there's software engineering, scratch video sensing, and there's sprung-a-leak plumbing. And that's all I have for the Park and Rec report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Mr. Oxley?
I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one, one other short piece of information, is that I attended a sewer authority meeting yesterday, and we are nearing the completion of the sewer replacement in Nob Hill and Devonshire, so that's, that's soon.
Great. Thank you. Reports of officials, the reason our engineer is not here, because she had nothing to report tonight, so we, we didn't want to pay her to show up, and so.
Could I just ask one question? Can I ask one question on that?
Yeah.
Even though she's not here, she did have a report, and she, they're seeking grant opportunities to fund the improvements proposed by the Pollution Reduction Plan, is that correct, Ms. Lewis?
There's no current grant applications for any of that, but we're keeping an eye out for it.
Keeping an eye out for it, but she mentioned doing outfall inspections, is that related?
That's required as part of the annual MS4 inspection by DEP.
Well, the, the plan has not yet been approved by the Department of.
The Pollution Reduction Plan has not, but the, the previous Pollution Reduction Plan requires us to do annual inspections, which, which is that outfall inspection.
Do you have any idea when the plan will be approved?
It's in DEP's hands.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mack, thank you for the engineer's report. Appreciate it. Okay, on to the solicitor's report. Our first one is the Toll Brothers Conditional Use Decision. Mr. Sander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board will recall that on February 26th, the Board held a Conditional Use Hearing on the application of Toll PA, Roman numeral 18 LP, for a conditional use, for a use B-12 cluster development in the CM zoning district. That hearing was held, evidence was taken, and the hearing was, public comment was taken, and the hearing was closed. The Board of Supervisors has since deliberated. I would ask the Board to keep in mind that this action does not allow the developer to begin construction. They must still file land development plans and go through the land development process, which will involve public meetings before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, where issues such as stormwater management, traffic, and final layout and design of the development will be reviewed and finalized. In that light, I would recommend a motion to approve the application of Toll PA 18 LP for a conditional use, for a use B-12 cluster development in the CM District, conditioned on the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. One, that the applicant comply with the CKS review letter dated February 13th, 2020. Two, that the applicant shall add a note to the record final plan, and a statement in the deed to each unit noting that the property is located in proximity to the Newtown Township Municipal Complex, which operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and contains a firing range. Third, in addition to all sidewalk required by the township subdivision and land development ordinance for the internal roads, the applicant shall install a multi-use walking trail in compliance with the township's comprehensive trail plan. With regard to Twining Bridge Road, the trail shall be installed in lieu of sidewalks. If constructing the trail causes the applicant to exceed the permitted maximum percentage of agricultural soils disturbance, then the township will not oppose an application for a variance to exceed such maximum percentage. If a variance is required and is subsequently denied by the zoning hearing board, the applicant shall not be required to install the trail. However, the applicant shall install sidewalk along Twining Bridge Road in compliance with the subdivision and land development ordinance. Fourth, all fees and costs owed to the township for Conditional Use Plan review and approval shall be paid in full to the township. Fifth, the Homeowners Association Declaration shall contain specific restrictions on the use of restricted property, such as, but not limited to, areas of agricultural soils, and shall provide that the township has the power to enforce the restrictions. And finally, six, in conjunction with the township traffic engineer, the applicant shall reevaluate the vehicular access to Twining Bridge Road to determine if modifications can be made to the plan to reconfigure access to the site from Twining Bridge Road without eliminating any units and still complying with applicable ordinance regulations. Once determined, modifications to the land development plans shall incorporate any reconfigurations to vehicular access, and the traffic impact study shall be updated accordingly. That is the substance of the motion recommended.
Okay, do I have such a motion? I moved. Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Now, now these, well, any questions from the Board? Now, Mr. Sander, these are all in regards to the Conditional Use Approval tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Any concerns that were brought up in regards to the roadway, the widening of it, stormwater management, buffering, that will all come under land development?
That's correct, and I, I know that when the Board was deliberating, the Board was very aware of those issues, comments previously made by the residents, and the appropriate time to address those issues is during land development approval.
And at that time, that is when this Board can give direction to the builder in what we would like to see done for the betterment of that neighborhood, and the betterment of the roadways, and so on?
Correct.
So, we will have input, and we will have direction on what we would like done?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
And there'll be multiple opportunities for that, with the Planning Commission review, making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, and in most cases, there's a preliminary plan and a, and a final plan.
That's correct. It'll be reviewed extensively by all of the township's consultants, the engineer, the planner, the traffic engineer, et cetera. It'll go to the Bucks County Planning Commission for review and comment. It'll be before the township's Planning Commission at least once, and often with a development of this type, they have to come back and address certain concerns made by the Planning Commission, so all of that will be part of the review of the ultimate plan that is presented for this development.
Okay. Any, any questions from the public on this motion? Yes, sir?
I'm Eric Pomerantz in Tudor, Chester. Two questions. The condition relevant about the trail, how do you, how do you measure that? Because it would seem to me that if you're giving them a pass, that they can disturb soils in the amount that would constitute the trail. soils in the amount that would constitute the trail, then it would seem that that means they're going to disturb soils as, that much in their construction, knowing that you're going to allow them to build the trail and give them a waiver. You're not going to oppose the variance. So how do you manage that? You know, I don't understand how that works.
Well, the condition will become part of conditional use approval that will be a part of the plan set that's sent to all of the reviewing engineers and consultants, so that when they see that condition, they will understand that it only has to do with encroaching on ag soils to install the trail. And they'll have to, and they'll lay the trail out on a plan, and they will determine, their engineer will determine how much ag soils are being encroached on, and whether they either meet the ordinance requirement, or they exceed the ordinance requirement for the trail installation. If they exceed it, they'll need approval from the zoning hearing board. And if the zoning hearing board grants it, they have it. This Board's agreeing not to oppose that in order to promote the trail.
So is there a separate limit to the amount of soils that can be disturbed for the trail, separate and apart from what they can do for the construction?
That's an engineering question, that I don't know the answer to.
Well, because it would seem that unless there are separate, unless, unless, so let's assume that when I'm building this, I can disturb ten. And I know by doing the measurement that when I build the trail, it's going to take up two. So I can now, you know, use the two, because you're going to allow me to do the two, unless it's separate. If there's a separate amount for the trail itself, then I'm limited to the ten on my build. If it's all one, then I can use up my whole allotment, figuring you're going to let me get the variance. Right?
I don't quite follow that. Maybe Mike can...
I think, I think the solution to this is just to ask them to do two separate calculations.
Okay.
I think one, one calculation for the overall site disturbance, that would need to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and a separate calculation for the, a distinct calculation for the trail itself. And we can work that out as part of...
I mean, maybe I'm not being as clear as I should, but to me, it feels like if it's one calculation, you can rob from Peter to pay Paul in the end, knowing that you're going to get the relief on the trail. That was my issue.
That's correct.
I'm just trying to understand how that works.
Right. I understand what you're saying, and I think that the solution to that is to do two separate calculations.
Okay, great. My second question has to do with the traffic pattern. Could you explain a little more detail that condition?
I can, I can read it again if you want me to.
Because, all right.
Explaining it, we're requiring the applicant to work with the township traffic engineer to reevaluate what they've already proposed as access to Twining Bridge Road. And if they, if modifications can be made that won't involve them losing any units, any housing units, the dwelling units that they propose, then those, those changes will be made.
Well, what if, or those changes will be made?
Well, if, if, in conjunction, in conjunction with the township traffic engineer, the applicant shall reevaluate the vehicular access to Twining Bridge Road to determine if modifications can be made to the plan to reconfigure access to the site from Twining Bridge Road without eliminating any units and still complying with applicable ordinance regulations. Once determined, modifications to the land development plans shall incorporate any reconfigurations to vehicular access, and the traffic impact study shall be updated accordingly. There's no guarantees that there are going to be changes.
I understand that.
But this is requiring them, in response to resident concern, that the Board said this is important, to allow the traffic engineer, the township's traffic engineer, to come in and say, hey, guys, why don't you consider this? Why don't you consider this? Why don't you consider this alternative? And again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know. But this is requiring them to work on that aspect of this plan.
And is that, those considerations, are those open to the public, such that the residents could participate in that discussion?
The residents will be able to participate in front of the Planning Commission when a plan has been filed, so you'll be able to see the plan that is being reviewed, and you will be able to participate before the Board of Supervisors when the Board is, has on its agenda to consider the plan, to approve it, or deny it, or take no action on it.
But not, but not in any of the discussions between the township traffic expert and the Toll people?
That's correct.
So we won't be able to participate in that?
That's correct.
Mr. Sander, is the reconfiguration of the entranceways off of Twining Road, would that be discussed in the land development phase by the Board?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we would have input and basically some negotiation power with Toll Brothers in regards to maybe getting this done?
Absolutely.
Because we asked Toll why they didn't go straight out and use the light at North Street and four thirteen. And I got a flat-out rejection from them, saying, no way, no how. We don't want that.
That, that is one of the options that will be explored, I will tell you. I don't know what the result of that is going to be. If the developer needs to spend a million dollars to make that happen, and that does not allow them to get their return on their investment of the development of this property, it's probably not going to happen. Their business, that's the way it works. It will be considered, it will be priced, it will be considered with any number of other alternatives to access from Twining Bridge.
So who advocates for the safety of the people that use Twining Bridge that have to make those turns onto four thirteen and swamp?
You will, you will.
Well, not if I'm not allowed in that meeting.
No, you're not allowed in that meeting.
So how do I advocate that?
It might be a phone call, it might be a meeting, because it's not a public meeting. I'm giving you the opportunity to come to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. When the plan is filed, you'll see what the access is laid out on the plan, and you'll be able to see what the discussion is between the applicant and the Planning Commission when they review, when they take the township traffic engineer's letter, and they open it up, and they review his comments on that. So you'll be able to partake in that.
Mr. Sander, can I make a suggestion? If you want, send me a general email, and I will pass it along to the township traffic engineer, so they have it.
With our concerns?
Yeah.
Sure. Happy to do that.
I mean, if you, if you all can get together and send one document, that's better than fifteen emails, but...
Well, you heard, you heard at the, at the hearing, you heard Mr. Rowe, who is the head of the HOA for Devonshire Meadows. You know, here in Newtown Meadows, we have concerns about the traffic. He had concerns about the traffic. So you can understand that that's a major issue for us, and so we just want to make sure that, to the extent that we're allowed to participate, I want to understand how the process works and how we can best effectuate that.
And I think that's the best way to do it, is get me, give me that information, and I will forward it to our traffic engineer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The Board, the Board continues to get emails, almost daily basis, and I, you know, we read them. We do read them.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mike Ewald, seventy-six Twining Bridge Road. Kind of requesting you delay on anything tonight. We were given no plans. It's thirteen pages. I had to, after last meeting, go home and download thirteen pages to look at the new proposed, what is it, Plan Number Nine, guys? What plan are we on now, from Toll?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, sir.
We had no way to even review what they're proposing, and you guys are tonight wanting to approve or deny?
Sir, there was a conditional use hearing. That's what this is. A conditional use hearing is not plan approval.
All right, so I have some concerns. I was there, one of the people that suffered through Newtown Meadows.
Okay.
That road will not support tri-axle dump trucks moving up and down, moving gravel and heavy equipment. Four thirteen will, across from Newtown Grant. It's a, a, a PennDOT-approved road that can carry the weight. Our road is already breaking up in multiple spots. I'm kind of requesting a construction entrance off of Twining Bridge. They want to come in and make their money and walk away with a pocketful of money. Why should we suffer due to it? It's not fair. The other thing is, the open space, donated to preserve the open space. I don't want township money paying the moat. It's eighty-eight acres of open space. That's a lot of money to keep maintained. Let the homeowners pay to do it if they want to move in. And that's all I have to say. But I'm asking you to delay on anything tonight.
So, Joe McAtee, eighty-eight Twining Bridge Road. I want to thank you guys. Obviously, I know this is, you know, you have to hear from a lot of people in the public, and, and obviously, this, this is, it's a very difficult topic for, for me and for my, for our neighbors. And so I just want to thank you for hearing, hearing us out. You know, I, I hear the language, and I, I can appreciate, there is some, there is some change to the language in terms of the traffic study, but what I really do find to issue with is, you know, it's kind of sleight of hand. You know, I don't, I know it wasn't meant to be like that way, but when they proposed a neighborhood with the septic field, basically human waste right next to my yard, you know, thank God that is not the plan today that we're looking at. But it only had forty-one houses. And that plan, they would have had profit, and they also would have had to build a wastewater treatment plant. So the language that you're talking about for traffic is that they cannot, they, if, if they can provide safe entrance without disturbing, you know, forty-five houses, which is four more houses than they proposed in the previous plan, you know, then, then, you know, they can go ahead and do it. I think the, my main problem is, they really need to create a right-of-way. It is going to cut into the property off of Durham Road, and likely, they should, they can go back to forty-one houses, take four houses out, make it safe, you know, for everybody, including the residents that are going to purchase that property. And so I would appreciate if the language was changed, and really, there was a focus on providing access to that neighborhood off of Durham Road, having safe right-of-way, and really prioritizing safety. So that's, that's my, my main issue, and I think, and I'm going to let my other neighbor talk more to this, but I think the spirit of the overall conservation management really needs to be upheld when making this decision. And, and then with that, I'll turn it over to my, my other neighbor.
Can I recommend, Mr. McAtee, like Mr. Lewis requested of Mr. Pomerantz, if, specific concerns with that traffic, if you could shoot him an email, and he will pass that along to the traffic engineer, I think that'd be a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Joanne Charlton, one ninety-four Twining Bridge Road. I didn't have an opportunity to attend the last meeting. I was ready, prepared, and able to attend all of the other prior scheduled canceled meetings, but I have two kids, and my husband was out of town, and one kid was six, so I didn't have the luxury of being here to explain my position on this conditional use application here. I have a few questions. It's the Board that has the authority of whether or not to approve this application, correct?
That's correct.
And the tone of this meeting presumes that you have some duty to approve it. At least, that's the impression I've gotten. When you hear the motion, it's as if you guys have already made the decision. When I bought my home, I was told that the property across the street from me could not be developed. It was owned by the church, zoned to be a cemetery, and that there couldn't be development on it. I get that that's with whatever the people who are handling the sale represented to me, if that wasn't in fact the case. I recognize that. However, it is zoned for conservation management, and you do not have to approve this use, this conditional use application. You have forty-five days from the last meeting to make this decision, is that correct? I feel like one week is rushing it.
Well, we have forty-five days from the February twenty-sixth to issue a full written decision that contains findings of fact, conclusions of law, a discussion, and an order. So the decision has to be made considerably before that to allow that decision to be drafted.
But it does not have to be made tonight, so long as it's made within that forty-five day window, recognizing all the work that you would have to do if the decision was to deny it, there's a forty-five day stretch from last week.
Correct.
Okay. I have a question for the Board. Have each of you read the conservation, joint conservation management plan? Have you all read the comprehensive plan, all of it? Am I permitted to ask each of you that question personally? Have you each read it?
You're talking about the comprehensive plan, or the ordinance?
Yes, the joint municipal comprehensive plan.
I don't think I read it from cover to cover, but I did read most of it, I think.
I'd say maybe six years ago. Not recently, for sure.
And I helped write it when it was written. I mean, not write it, but look at the...
I hope you vote no, then. Go ahead.
I can't say I read the whole thing, no.
Not in its entirety.
Okay, well, you're making a decision here tonight, and you need to make a responsible one. And the code requires that, I'm just going to cite and draw your attention to the requirements that are set forth in the code that will apply to your decision here tonight.
And what are you reading from right now?
It's section thirteen oh one.
Okay, is that the joint municipal zoning ordinance, or is that the joint municipal comprehensive plan?
It's not the plan. It's the zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance? Okay, because you asked them if they read the comprehensive plan.
Well, yes and not. You'll see why that's relevant in a second.
Okay. So you're now quoting from the zoning ordinance?
The ordinance. I'm quoting from the ordinance, not the plan.
Thank you.
I may also quote the plan, but right now, I'm quoting from the ordinance. The governing body, that's you, shall not approve a conditional use application except in conformance with the conditions and standards outlined in the ordinance. The governing body, that's you, shall grant a conditional use only if the proposed development submitted will meet all of the following general requirements, as well as any specific requirements and standards listed herein in the code for the proposed use. The governing body, that's you, shall, shall require that any proposed use and location, among other things, be, so you shall do each of these things. The first is, in accordance with the joint municipal comprehensive plan for Newtown Township, Upper Makefield Township, Brightstown Township, and consistent with the spirit, purposes, and intent of the applicable district. So that's point one. If you all haven't read it in its entirety, I don't see how you're prepared to make that decision tonight. The joint comprehensive plan, I'll just summarize some important points, because I have read all two hundred and sixty-six pages, including appendices to it, states, it points out that the spirit of that plan, which was adopted not just by Newtown Township, it was adopted by Newtown Township, Upper Makefield Township, and Brightstown Township. And the plan was adopted after thoughtful consideration and deliberation, as I'm sure you, you know, and probably recall, and it was intended to be a blueprint for the future for this area. And it was adopted after several years of discussion. The spirit, purpose, and intent promote smart growth, not kick the can down the road to the land development, which we won't have the opportunity to come in and voice our opinions and objections. We can send an email, and that'll get passed along, and it'll fall within the rest of the tons of emails I'm sure they'll receive, and I doubt that it will get paid the attention it deserves. Promote sustainable growth and protect natural resources. Provide safe connections and mobility. Preserve open space. Preserve farmland. Protect agriculture. I was throwing the football with my son in the front yard yesterday, and enjoying the view in front of me, part of what attracted me to Newtown Township. You're going to approve this plan, and it will happen, and it will be a mess, and it will cause congestion, and it will cause safety issues. You don't have to approve it. The entrance lets out right into my house. The headlights will be shining in my dining room, which I host Thanksgiving dinners for my large family every year. There's a whole room from one side of my house to the other. We line tables all up, big Italian family, and they will all enjoy all of the headlights that will come into my home while we're enjoying our Thanksgiving dinner. On the second level, lights will shine into my bedroom, my daughter's bedroom window, and to my office, all hours. So it's certainly affecting and disturbing me. Which brings me to the next point in the code. One of the second things that you shall consider, the improvement shall not be a detriment to the property in the immediate vicinity. Well, it certainly is a detriment to my property. It is certainly a detriment to all of these friendly folks you see sitting here who are my neighbors. I walk my dog with my two kids, careful not to get hit by the cars that are already zooming around the corner, already, as soon as they get on that second stretch after the bend, slamming it on the gas. I witness it personally, when I'm walking with my family, my precious ones. I witness it personally, when I'm walking with my family, my precious ones, and I know that it will affect them. Third, "It must be suitable for the property in question and designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be in harmony with and appropriate in the appearance to the existing or intended character of the general vicinity." I don't think it checks that box either, that's your decision to make, not mine. "Suitable in terms of effects on highway traffic and safety." You can kick the can down the road and let the next person, next governing body, make the decision, but you know that once you approve it, it's a done deal, and all that nightmare headache will happen. Take a look at what's happening in the shops in town. I love Chipotle, I really like taking my family to Mod Pizza, but I'll tell you, it's a nightmare driving through that lot, and it's not even completed yet. That's what you're going to do to us on Twining Bridge Road, that's what we'll have to face. You can go home to your homes, but I'll go home to mine, and that's the nightmare that I'll face, and that's the nightmare that my neighbors will face. And it's not just turning off of Twining Bridge, and you know that most of that traffic is going to go Twining Bridge to 413. You try to come on that road and make a left. It takes a lot of time, it's not just our road, try to make a left off of Stoopville onto 413. Now dump 80-plus more cars on that heavy load. It doesn't work, and it's not safe. It's not safe, I know that I am judging distance and judging, and making calls with my family getting on those roads. Are there proposals for new traffic lights? That's got to come with this, how do we not do that? Don't approve this decision. I also want to point out that you have discretion to require more. We have, when this first came up, and I first came and spoke at one of these meetings, Toll Brothers had proposed a plan, and we all got up and we all voiced our objections and our concerns, a lot of the same stuff. Go back to the drawing board, Toll Brothers, come back with a plan that we can live with, come back with a plan that addresses our concerns. They came back with something that's worse! There's not as many, but both entrances dump out onto Twining Bridge now, both. It's conditional use, you do not need to approve this. You have the discretion, as the governing body, to impose whatever conditions you deem necessary to ensure that any proposed development will securely, secure substantially the objectives of this ordinance. You have more power than you think you do here. In, in allowing a conditional use, the governing body may attach such reasonable conditions and safeguards other than those related to off-site transportation and road improvements. I'm not happy with the motion. I don't think it addresses all of the concerns. Give it more time. Finally, "There are special considerations for this B-12 single-family detached cluster subdivisions." Special considerations 1304F, subparagraph 2. "The governing body may impose reasonable conditions regarding the layout and use of the open space as it deems necessary to ensure the proposed use meets the objectives of the ordinance. Results in no nuisance impacts on existing proposed or potential uses in the surrounding area," that's all of us. "Limits future uses of open space and ensures use that is compatible with uses, activity, and activities in the conservation management district." Just a few other final points, and then I'll turn it over to hopefully more people. Looks like maybe I'm it. You have a responsibility to make a responsible decision, it impacts our whole township. It doesn't just impact Twining Bridge Road and all of these nice friendly faces you see here, it impacts far more than us. I wish that more people would show up, I try to push for more people to show up, but look where we are, it's, I don't even know what day it is, Wednesday? It's Wednesday night, it's late, it's my daughter's night for me to read to her tonight, and she, I'm missing it, and I'm sure that's creating some issues for my husband, but it's important for me to be here, so I'm here. Groundwater is another important thing. I don't know if I can be as articulate when I talk about this topic, but water is important. I will say that when there's a heavy rain, I have a small river that runs across the front of my, the length of my property, and it's like running water. I'm expecting to see fish jumping out of it at some point. So, if you're building, what you're building right across the street from me, with the entrance dumping into my house, and it's raised as compared to my property, I'm going to have an ocean in front of my house. I don't trust the studies that Toll Brothers has proposed. Their proposed results giving you comfort to approve the decision, don't do it, not tonight. What will happen with the water that's supposed to seep in? I know that behind my house, I'm right across from where this is going to happen, the water really steeps into the ground. Most of my backyard, and I'm on three acres, because the zoning didn't allow for a home to be built on less than three acres, because they're preserving open space in the look-and-feel of Newtown, my property developer complied with that. That said, it's marshy back there, it's soft, so there's already an issue with water absorption, so it's just going to flow down. It relates, when the plan was developed, it addressed the fact that there, there needs to be a preservation of groundwater. And when they designated that property across the street as conservation management, it was not just by chance, they did their homework, there were years involved with this planning. And "The conservation management areas are reserved for low-intensity uses in order to provide for groundwater recharge." Do you all know what groundwater recharge is? Then how do you know if by voting to approve this, that you're preserving that? This decision affects more than us, and I don't think that you don't care about us, I think that you do. You run for office because you care about the public, and you have a duty to make responsible, informed decisions. And I wish I could have come last week, but here I am this week, and I thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I urge you not to approve this tonight. Read through that plan, give it some more thought, take some more comments and emails if you're permitted to, from us. Let us help to guide what will happen, because it will affect all of us, and you're just helping to create congestion nightmare. So, thank you for your time, stay healthy, and have a good evening.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Fansdale, and I live in Devonshire. I kind of don't sequel in public, and my husband was supposed to come tonight and couldn't make it, so I apologize for probably not making as much sense as I should, but I just urge you to hold off on the vote tonight as well. I think last week, when Toll Brothers came and presented their information, they made it sound like they had made all these changes to do us a favor. For example, they stated that the new proposal was much better than their prior one, but their statement is implying that they had given us something that we could actually accept, when that was never the case, there was never a good proposal to begin with. They also use a similar argument by saying that the new proposal is less dense than some other nearby neighborhoods, trying to, I think, get us to think, oh, this is great. But that may be true, the other neighborhoods are more dense, but they're not zoned as conservation management. And to me, the conservation management piece is important. I like living in Newtown and looking out and seeing rolling hills and, and beautiful neighbors, I can see Tyler Park from my house, I can walk there, and I love that. And I feel like what this is proposing is more just ordinary suburban-like homes that you can see anywhere, and taking away from what Newtown has to offer its, its citizens and community. And I'm not even sure what they're proposing is, is actually, it should be done, in that the open space should be clustered to promote agriculture use of the property. And the last diagram I saw showed homes having that, that land in their backyards. That's not a use that you could use for agriculture, that would be someone's backyard. So, you're not able to actually farm that land, and that's the idea of the management, is that you can use that land and use it as open space and use it for agriculture, and they're taking that away with that, with that plan that they showed us. Let's see, just looking through my notes real quick. So, really, the reality is that Toll Brothers is aggregating the houses in the prime agricultural open space and leaving behind primarily undeveloped land, and areas of land that's difficult to farm. It's inconsistent with what the zoning should, should be. So, I think, I hope that was clear, but I do think we need to look at, at the idea of what Newtown is, and why we all live here and why we love it, and, and it's fine if they want to develop land, but it has to meet all those criteria, and the current one does not do that as far as, as everything that was said before, in the safety and the streets, and also the farmland and the open space, and allowing us to still feel like we live in this great township that we do. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mr. Sander, if the board...
Sir.
...are not to approve this tonight, and Toll Brother being an equitable owner in that property, what could the recourse from Toll Brothers be?
Well, they don't have any recourse as long as we issue the full written decision within 45 days of the end of the hearing, which is February 26th.
February? Oh, that's the, okay. Well, and then after that, after that is done.
After the...
You, you give your written decision within the 45-day period. What, what, what is the procedure after that?
If it's approved, they proceed to file preliminary land development plans. If it's denied, they have an option to appeal that decision to the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County within 30 days of the issuance of the decision.
Could they, could they apply for a by-right plan on that property?
Absolutely. In fact, one of their options, other than appealing the decision, they don't have to appeal the decision at all, they could say, well, we tried the cluster, that didn't work, so we're going to file a by-right plan that, as I understand it, would have 60-plus homes that would be spread evenly across the property, still requiring the same access that they require with the conditional use plan, but leaving no preserved open space and occupying the entire property, which would put about 50% more traffic on the area roads than the proposed plan.
With that, with that by-right...
Well, the board, the board's asking, the board's deliberating right now.
You could come, yeah, you could come up with any question, but with that by-right, I'm just going to ask a question by the time you come up.
If it's conservation management property...
Yes.
You've got to come up.
Three-acre zoning. Three-acre zoning.
It would mean each property would need to have three acres allocated to it.
Correct.
So, it would be residential homes that have three acres of land.
Correct.
Why don't you still come up?
Approximately, approximately sixty, approximately 60 single-family homes.
My only concern is the way it was articulated, it made it sound like, if you don't approve this, it's going to come back way worse, and there will be 60-some homes...
I didn't say it will, it could.
It could, it just...
It could.
It was the impression I got, so I just want to make sure that you're all clear, that the 61 homes they could build would each need three acres of land associated with it. So, you're looking at some pretty big homes with a whole lot of space, like my house has, three acres of land.
Yep, no preserved open space, all of the rechargeable land that you were talking about, instead of having about half or more than half of the property that's out there still allow recharge, you're going to have houses, you're going to have driveways, you're going to have decks and patios and things that are going to take up most of the rechargeable area. Could, could. I am presenting this to the board because I have a responsibility to tell them what the, what they could face, depending on how they respond to this application.
Right, there are, there are other limitations, I don't have that section of the ordinance in front of me.
There are environmental limitations.
There are other protections and limitations.
I, I, I agree.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Come on up.
188 acres.
You can come up to the microphone, sir. Sir, you can come up to the microphone?
Come up to the microphone.
All right, so I'm zoned conservation management, I'm allowed 0.08% coverage. Had to get a variance to put in 18-foot pool.
That's impervious coverage. That's impervious coverage versus lot, minimum lot size, or two different dimensions that we're talking about.
So, how are you going to put 100, or on 180 acres, 60 homes on a three-acre lot? Whether the road's going to be dirt, so they're not impervious, and all the sidewalks?
The roads are going to be impervious, and they're going to go in there, and they're going to service all of the homes that are built in there.
My point is, if I have 180 acres and I put 60 houses, last time I did the math, that's 60 houses on three acres.
Right.
Sixty times three is 180.
That's right.
Where do you come up with eight acres for all the roads and sidewalks and everything?
That's not lot size, you're talking about impervious coverage, you're mixing apples and oranges. You're talking about impervious coverage, I'm talking about minimum lot size.
So, you don't think the roadways and all the sidewalks are going to encompass more than six acres? That doesn't sound feasible.
I, I, I already tried to respond, I can't respond anymore.
Yeah, we definitely, you guys definitely need to delay a little bit on any approvals on this until everybody gets to see the plans.
Everybody's seen the plans, we've held a public hearing, the evidence is before the board, there's no other plans for the board to review, it was a hearing that was held last time, and the hearing was closed, the evidence is already in, and the board has deliberated.
Okay, just a couple more questions in regards to the by-right. What kind of, if this was filed by Toll Brothers, what kind of, the young lady said, power that we have, what kind of power do we have over by-right development?
If a plan is submitted that complies with the zoning ordinance requirements, the subdivision and land development ordinance requirements, and any other applicable ordinance such as stormwater management, things like that, the board has no power to deny such a plan.
So, do they even have to come before the board of supervisors?
Yes, they would.
Okay, for what reason?
To have the plan reviewed and formally approved. You would still have that ability, but if you deny it, it's, if, if a plan complies with all ordinances and you deny it, not only are you looking at a court overturning your decision, but you may be looking at attorney's fees and punitive damages for blatantly ignoring the, the law in that regard.
Has there ever been a plan, as you just described, submitted, that was by-right, and it complied with every ordinance?
No.
Okay.
That's up to the developer.
But, but you've never had one. You've never had a by-right plan...
In this case?
...that complied with all the ordinances come before you, that you didn't have the power, because it was all complied with.
In this case, in this case, that's correct, we can only deal...
You've never had one.
Let me finish, you can only deal with what the developer...
Correct.
...hands you.
But, but...
And, and, but you, but you have to be able to see what the options are.
I appreciate your hypothetical, but the reality is, you've never had a developer walk in with a by-right plan that was in full compliance, that you were powerless to influence. You've never had it happen.
In this case, that's correct.
Mr. Sander.
That's all you need to know about the power you have, gentlemen.
Mr. Sander, the February 26th date, that was...
Yes.
How many days ago? Two weeks and three...
14 days.
Yeah, 17 days, maybe, yeah, 14 days.
I, yeah.
It was two weeks ago.
Yeah.
If we put it off, if we tabled this until the next board meeting, and we'd be up to, remembering that 45-day timeline, we'd be up to another...
Well, I, why don't we just calculate the 45 days?
Yep.
It's a Saturday, Saturday, April 11th. If you go to the 25th, you'd be leaving me about two weeks to prepare the decision, and frankly, I'm not sure what would change.
What, what we would gain by doing that?
Right.
Except for whether the number of people...
Again, again, the evidence that was presented, has, you've already had that since, for, for two weeks now.
Could we ask...
Mr. Sanders, what did you think of, I'm sorry, ma'am, what's your name again? I apologize.
Joanne Charlton.
Mrs. Charlton, correct? What'd you think of what she had to say in terms of the particular ordinance that she had mentioned?
Sure.
And how that affects our decision in any way?
Sure. I, I don't think, and, and Ms. Charlton seems very learned in the documents that she reviewed, I don't know if you're an attorney or not, if you're a land use attorney? Okay, okay. The burden of proof and a condition... The burden of proof in a conditional use case comes into play here, and the, the criteria that Ms. Charlton read from the zoning ordinance are what are known and have been identified by the court as general criteria, not specific criteria. She read criteria that apply to all conditional uses, not just the specific conditional use for the B-12 cluster use. There is a different treatment by a court in reviewing a municipality's decision based on that burden of proof. The developer has the burden of proving that it, that A, the use that is sought is permitted by conditional use, which obviously it is, and second, that the applicant meets all of the general, I'm sorry, specific criteria applicable to only that use. So if in the zoning ordinance, under, under specific regulations, there are criteria listed just that apply to use B-12 cluster development, and there are specific requirements, you must have certain lot size, you must have certain building frontage, you must have certain access, you must, those would be, the burden is on the developer, the applicant, to prove affirmatively that it complies with those specific requirements. The criteria that Ms. Charlton read are known as general requirements, and the burden is not on the applicant to prove that it meets those general requirements, even if the zoning ordinance says it is. The burden is on anybody opposing the application to raise such health, safety, and welfare issues that rise to a certain level that would shift the burden back to the developer to have to prove that their development does not violate or present health, safety, and welfare concerns for the general public. Now, unfortunately, the hearing was closed on February twenty-sixth, the applicant's not here tonight, and the comments that are made tonight are specifically only on the motion that was made and don't have a role in the evidence that this board is entitled to consider when making a decision on this. In my legal view, the applicant has met its burden of proving that this is a conditional use in the CM district and that it meets the requirements of the ordinance that are applicable to that use. They don't have the burden of proving that they meet those requirements, even if the zoning ordinance says they do. So I'm telling you, from a legal perspective, that in my view, the applicant has met its burden of proof in this case.
So, and so basically Toll Brothers has, it doesn't matter, and we as a body would have to prove that, and if we lose
Well, not you as a body, if you wanted to take a position against this
Right.
you would've had to hire independent counsel
Okay.
to oppose it, and I would sit and advise the board
Uh-huh.
Independent counsel would have presented witnesses and testimony against it if this board had determined that it wanted to oppose the application. But there was no such evidence.
And that was in the past, so
It was public comment, there were no other parties
Got it.
to, to the case.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Ask a question, so it's not possible to reopen the
Correct.
trial?
That's correct.
Is it possible to get a continuance of the forty-five days, an extension?
We can ask the applicant, but I doubt they will grant it because they
But you think you would have a problem meeting that forty-five day deadline if we didn't decide tonight?
If you didn't decide tonight, it's gonna, the same question is gonna come back to you in two weeks. Nothing's, nothing can happen between now and then that would change the information that is in front of you necessary to make this decision. Because it's a hearing that was, the evidence was presented, hearing is closed.
Don't you have to apply that evidence to the plan? I'm just confused. I, I appreciate, Mr. Sanders, that the evidence is closed, but, but as the, as the people sitting in decision-making and with the, the information provided here about the comprehensive management plan, isn't the role of the board to apply that evidence to the plan?
It's to apply the evidence that adheres to the application
Right.
that may include plans, but those plans are only, those plans are not fully engineered
No, 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 wrong plan.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We, they made an application, B-12, conservation management.
Right. It's permitted.
The, the zoning ordinance says that in order to approve it, you have to consider the following items. You've identified the specific versus the general.
Right.
But one of the things that, if I'm understanding what was said earlier correctly, is that you have to consider the conservation management plan.
No, you're, you're talking, you're confusing it.
Okay, okay.
You're, you're, Ms. Charlton mentioned the comprehensive
Right.
plan, not the con, the conservation management
I'm misspeaking.
The comprehensive plan is a planning document
Right.
that is adopted by, for the joint area by Upper Midfield, Wrightstown, and Newtown, that is a, is a planning document that suggests how the development, the future land development and the, the land use within the joint shared municipalities should proceed. It is not binding, it is a reference.
But you mentioned earlier that if, when the board asked a question, chairman asked a question, if we denied this application, what was Toll's options? And one of the things you said was that they could do a by right
Mm-hmm.
development plan.
Yeah.
Which is slightly different than what I'm hearing you say now, which is, you believe they've met all the legal requirements and basically we have to approve it.
Two choices, they can appeal
Right.
if the, if this board denies the conditional use.
Right.
They can file an appeal to court, and in my legal opinion, that I've advised the board, they will win. Okay? Which gets their conditional use approved without any conditions at all. Okay? That's number, that's the risk you take
Okay.
there.
Okay.
Number two, they might say, fine, if that's the way they want it
We'll do the
We'll file, we'll file our by right plan.
We'll do the by right plan.
Yeah.
And if the by right plan complies with everything, then
Yep.
they can build it.
Correct.
So the real risk here more is an appeal, right? I mean, because you just admitted, no one's ever done a by right. They, they've never, they don't do it, they're not gonna do it.
Oh, you mean anybody in the history of development? Or, or this?
No, no, these kinds of things. In, in our township, how many by right plans have you guys seen that were three acres with all the other bells and whistles?
Well
None.
Again, if, if they need waivers
They're not going that way. So the issue really is, do I appeal, if you guys decide you're not gonna approve this, Toll would then think, okay, I'll appeal this, I've got the money, I've got the lawyers, I got the time, I could appeal this, and the risk for us is that if they win that, they could get it without conditions.
Correct.
That's what, that's what you've just said.
Correct.
Okay.
Their conditional use would be approved without conditions.
Without conditions. So, okay, I understand, thank you.
You mean the, it would be, the application that they currently submitted would be automatically approved if it wins on appeal, is that what you're saying?
Correct. The board's decision would be overruled and reversed and the
Well, the, the additional cons, uh, conditions that you put on it that you just read tonight would not apply then.
Correct.
I just have a couple quick questions. Doesn't that mean then it would just come back down to the board to be reviewed and approved again?
That's a remand, and that's only if the court determines that there was not enough evidence or sufficient evidence provided on a certain point, I don't see that happening here.
Okay, I just wanna point out, I know you referenced it may be in the code, but the code does say, in the general conditions, not the specific condition section, C, subsection C, the burden of proof in the conditional use application shall be on the applicant to establish that all of the conditions are in the spirit of this ordinance. So that's what the code says.
Agree.
I recognize that precedent may, I can't imagine that it ignores that, but
It does.
But the point I made earlier was that y'all didn't read this comprehensive plan and your decision imposes on you an obligation to require that you had done that, so I think at least extending
That's not true. That's not true.
The governing body shall require that any proposed use and location, among other things, be in accordance with the joint municipal comprehensive plan.
Okay, that's a general criteria.
So you're telling me that if the board members haven't read it, that they're prepared to make the decision tonight?
Sure.
I would propose now
Or, or we may have a different viewpoint.
The comprehensive plan's a big, long document that deals with lots and lots of different things.
I read it.
We, we have a motion and a second. I am gonna make a motion to table this, and will anyone second that right now?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second on tabling. Any questions on tabling? Now, you shouldn't have any questions on tabling.
I don't.
Okay? So, I'm not telling her not to have questions, but
I know you're not.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna ask the question, all those in favor of tabling the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
So the motion, the original motion has been defeated, and we're gonna move on. Mr. Sanders?
No, no, the, there was no vote on the original motion.
It's tabled, okay.
The matter, the matter is tabled and will be, will appear on the next agenda.
Okay, but, but I would get ready, ready to write your decision in the meantime, so we don't know what's gonna happen after next
Exactly, I don't know what's gonna happen, so I can't, I can't write it.
Okay.
I can't start to write it.
I'll drag it.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, Mr. Sanders, you're still up.
Last item on our, is, oh no, the second item, we're not even at the last item. We're at the second item.
And we're still late.
As often happens, a, a property owner in the township files a tax assessment appeal, appealing their tax assessment, and the, in general, the school district handles these appeals because the school district has the lion's share of the tax revenue to lose if there's any reduction, excuse me? Excuse me, sir? If there's any reduction in the assessment, and in this case, a company called GPO Newtown filed an assessment appeal, the school district entered into negotiations with the taxpayer and entered into a stipulation that it has, that the school district is recommending that the township sign, it's also recommending that the county, as, as the third taxing authority, sign the stipulation. I asked the school district solicitor what the net impact on Newtown Township would be as far as tax money goes, and found out that for the years 2019 and 2020, the tax loss based on this assessment appeal will be five hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents per year for each of those two years. With that information, it's our recommendation that, based on the stipulation and settlement that the school district has agreed to with the applicant, with the appellant, that the board authorize the execution of the settlement stipulation by me.
Okay, do I have such a motion? Have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is five zero.
Thank you. Final item is, recall at the last hearing we held, a conditional use hearing for Bamba Tacos and Rum, the board granted that application with conditions, our office has prepared the written decision required under that conditional use, and it's before you tonight to approve as final.
Okay, you have a motion to approve as final, Bamba Tacos and Rum.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
A motion and second, any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Kyle, can you say aye?
I said aye.
Okay.
I was delayed.
Five zero.
Thank you, that concludes our report.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance is, it's tonight is two million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Plan expiration is before the, before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn still here. Hey again, chief.
Good morning, board members.
We saw you hours ago, didn't we?
Yes, sir. February twenty twenty, we documented seventeen thousand miles during routine patrol, documented fifteen hundred and sixty-two calls for service, we had sixteen arrests cleared and twenty assignments. And just keep in mind, we had a couple burglary arrests, two aggravated assaults from DUIs and narcotics possessions. There were fifteen new cases referred to detectives, there were seventy traffic crashes, two hundred and twenty-nine traffic citations with thirty-nine warnings issued. Please slow down, put down your cell phones, and wear your seatbelts. On two ones, critical event, we had four commercial burglaries along Sycamore Avenue. Just so you know, the board knows and the community knows, as a result of our investigative leads and our investigations, we did identify a male and he was apprehended and charged with four of those jobs. We continue to do proactive enforcement on our truck enforcement, and Mill Pond Road, there was a, a social media post regarding traffic issues. As a result of that social media post that we came up with, we actually initiated a enforcement initiative blitz along that particular corridor, where we issued, made thirty-three contacts, issued twenty-eight citations and five warnings. Just a reminder to the public, please, if you have a traffic concern issue, please report it to the police department, not on social media, because we may not pick it up. This way I can keep everybody safe, I don't mind enforcing what we need to enforce out there. Public service announcements, Drug Tech Back Day, April twenty-fifth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. in this building. We are having a coffee with a cop next Wednesday, March eighteenth, from eight a.m. to ten a.m. So stop down and see me, wash your hands, if you're sick, stay home, we'll catch you on the next one. The other issue for public safety announcements, please lock your cars, the entire Bucks County region is being targeted with theft from autos. Please remove your valuables from your, from your vehicle, lock your cars overnight, take your key fobs with you, and all your personal belongings, just to prevent any issues that we may have. And regarding this COVID nineteen, the police department, as well as the emergency services unit of Newtown Township, the emergency medical services, we're in constant cooperation and communication regarding safeguarding the public, we'll continue to do that as well. Just typical CDC requirements, wash your hands every twenty sec, twenty minutes, twenty seconds, twenty seconds, twenty minutes would help it too. Don't touch your face, you know, if you're sick, stay home for work, stay home from the public, don't go to large social gatherings, common sense is the rule today, just be safe. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
I have a couple. Thank you for the Mill Pond Road, and just to remind you, I did mention that the last time you were here, because I met with some people in a live meeting and not on social media, so I just transmitted at that time what their concerns were, but thank you for doing that extra enforcement on Mill Pond Road.
You're welcome, sir.
I'm sure the residents appreciate that. I just, tonight we had a, a big discussion about harassment and things of that sort, and I noticed in your report, there's an item, five cases of harassment this month and five last month, in January, February, five cases of harassment, and there are these UCR codes, twenty-four-ten and twenty-four-fifty. Can you explain the types of, what types of harassment are occurring, those five cases are, in general? Do you have any idea?
Nah, John, I would, I would need to refer to the actual police reports to determine what those specific five cases were. Like I said, we've handled over fifteen hundred incidents throughout the, the month of February, then for five particular incidents, I don't know.
Do you mind if I get in touch with you afterwards?
Sure, anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Anything else for the chief?
Where are you having the coffees?
Chick-fil-A, Four West Avenue, West Road, down in the shopping center.
Okay.
Chick-fil-A, eight a.m. to ten a.m.
Perfect, and we're, we're, we're having Java with you?
Yes, sir.
I look forward to it, my man.
What's your date, what's your date again on that, chief?
It's a date, March eighteenth.
March eighteenth?
Eight a.m. to ten a.m.
Great.
This is just an idea to spread it out a little bit further, besides Corner Baker, who usually hosts us, are extremely well-hosted, this is try to generate a little bit more activity out here.
Absolutely. There you go.
Okay.
Free chicken nuggets. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Next two items under my report are for two purchases that were included in the 2020 capital plan, first of which is the purchase of a milling head. This is, this machine will be used for more permanent fixes of potholes, et cetera. The appropriate motion would be motion to approve the purchase of a milling head from Bobcat through Sourcewell in the amount of $21,504.32. Just a reminder that these, this piece of machinery will be paid for out of liquid fuels funds.
Do I have such a motion? I'd make that motion. Have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions from the board? This is under budget.
Correct. We had $22,000 budgeted in the capital plan.
Great. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Next item under my report is for the consideration to approve the purchasing of fencing at field number two at Helen Randall Park. Over the past few years, we've been slowly working to replace those backstops over there. They're pretty rundown. So this is the third one, third year in a row. Second year in a row for the same contractor, which is County Line Fence. This will be paid for out of recreation capital, recreation capital fund instead of the general fund. We had a total of $22,000 budgeted for this item, which came back, I'm sorry, $20,000 budgeted for this item, and this came back at $13,400. So it's significantly under budget. So appropriate motion would be motion to approve the purchase and installation of fencing at Helen Randall Field in the amount of $13,400 from County Line Fence Incorporated.
Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
And the final item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is the supplemental agreement with PennDOT. If you recall, last year, we had approved the agreement with PennDOT for their winter services maintenance in the amount of, I believe it was $17,200 a year, that they would pay us to maintain their portions of the roads within the township, meaning salting and plowing. Their lawyers had came back with us and said they, we need to execute this supplemental agreement before they issue payment. So that's what's before the board this evening on this agenda. So the appropriate motion would be motion to approve the supplemental agreement with PennDOT for winter services and execute the resolution.
Submove. Second.
Second.
A motion and second. Now, this means that we pay PennDOT?
No, PennDOT pays us.
They're paying us. So for instance, when we fill up a pothole on 413?
No, this is, this is more, they take care of the maintenance of potholes. This is just for salting and plowing.
Okay, gotcha. Which would be if we did 413?
Right.
Okay. Now, do they do 413?
No, we do, we take care of it.
We do? Okay, gotcha. Any other questions from the board?
Is this in case we might get a snowflake this year?
Shh. Still have time.
Don't jinx it, Kyle.
Winter's not over yet.
Blizzard might help the virus issue.
Forty-nine degrees, but winter...
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mack, minutes, bills, list, and reports. Can I just make a comment? I want to thank Mr. Lewis and the Public Works Department for removing trees on Forest Lane. One tree, these are huge trees. One tree fell over the road, and if that had hit a school bus, it could have been a major incident, and I know you had two other trees removed of equal size, so I think that was a good idea. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 26, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. I have a motion and I have a second. Motion and second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Okay. I make a motion that we pay our bills, according to the bills list dated March 11, 2020, totaling $358,720.27. A motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions from the board on the bills list? I have one question. There's a payment on page one of $2,786,082 for the summer 2020 brochure mailing. I mean, do we usually pay people before they do the service?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, they'll do a good job. Okay. Any other questions? Motion and second. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Okay. Finally, I make a motion to approve interfront transfers as per the bills list dated March 11, 2020, totaling $320,403.73. A motion and I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Second session of public comment. Anyone have a public comment?
John DiApril, Newtown Grant.
Mike, your mic.
John DiApril, Newtown Grant. Biggest and the best. More population than Newtown Borough. Remember that Johnny Mack. Okay. You did Love is Love resolution, and this old guy's here to say, what about Vietnam Veterans Day, March 29?
Well, I don't know if we have time to get a resolution for this year. We could always do a resolution, just like we did tonight, and backdate it.
Yeah.
But I'll give you, you know what? The next meeting would give recognition to the 29th being Vietnam Veterans Day and remind the people of that.
Thank you. Because as I said before, you know, us guys are getting older, and you know, so many pass away every day, and you know, the over 58,000 that got killed over there, that terrible place. And, you know, they talked about depression and a lot of stuff, like I said before, and homelessness and stuff. We're, you know, we're in on that. We're, you know, I'm a lucky guy. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Can I make a comment? Mr. DiApril, thank you for that. You know, my nephew serves in the Navy, and you know, he was a broad, and he's back, and he definitely has some challenges, that he's battling some demons inside of his head. So I definitely agree with what he's saying and making sure that we represent these armed force veterans.
Absolutely. Thank you. All our armed forces are, the guys coming back from overseas are having problems sometimes, too. So on to old business, any old business tonight? Any new business tonight? We have no need for an executive session, is that correct? So, oh, yeah, okay. Just to make an announcement, we did have an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss, I guess it wasn't litigation.
Well, we deliberated, and we also discussed a matter of litigation.
Okay. Thank you. It was so long ago, I forgot. But anyway, I take a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Good night, everybody. Have a great night.